Land that's worth millions of dollars of the city is because there has not been a lot of transparency around this. There has not been forthcoming information. I'm hearing there were meetings conducted over the weekend between individuals. Certain people were called on council, certain people were not called on council. And just because I voted no, uh, the chair of this development authority don't feel like I should be communicated to. I am still a part of this council. I don't know what's going on. I don't know why the mayor refused to sign the document. And so because he refused to sign the document, there's a motion on the floor to usurp his authority to get the city manager to sign the document. When the charter clearly states the authority who sign in these type of agreements reside with the mayor. And um, I need to get a clear understanding of why the mayor's uh, does not want to sign the document. He does have authority to sign documents. Uh, but if it's not in the best interest of the city, if it's not in the best interest of his legal right and he's given pushback, there's a reason behind that. And I think full transparency needs to uh, be brought for this council. Because I'm hearing bits and pieces that certain things is legal, certain things is not. I'm hearing it's time sensitive. I'm hearing it's not time sensitive. So I need full transparency.
Mayor, I'm in the queue.
I'm in the queue too.
All right, Mr. Colley.
Amen.
And I think Dr. Ral just asked to be accused.
Go ahead, Mr. Colley.
First of all, I, I, I want to apologize, Councilman Willis, we did so well in the uh, work session. But last year, you were communicating with the county development authority. You and the mayor were communicating with the county development.
Be careful what you say now. Be careful what.
Hey, y'all, I'm, I, I have the floor. There were, there were.
Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on.
I will, I will rephrase. There were communications between city officials and the county development authority that all of council were not privy to. So it appears that we have a trend in our city of development being done through individuals without including the entire mayor and council in their conversations. We have a very bad habit that we've established of doing that. I think one of the best ways that we can end this habit is extricating ourselves whenever and wherever possible from economic development discussions. We have an economic development director and we have our own development authority. We have a city development authority. And so at any time that we can take council, the mayor and council out of it and allow those independent bodies to direct our development, I believe that we should do that. And ultimately, what this conveyance is doing is putting the development of a severely decades ignored area of Old National into the hands of an independent development authority made up of South Fulton citizens. So I think the best way that we can stop all of these arguments in the future is that anytime we have anything, whether it's a tad, whether it's a land conveyance, whatever it is, we need to get it out of our hands as quickly as possible and into the hands of our development authority. And so that's why I'm, that's why I'm speaking in favor of this. I think we, we need to get, we need to get out of the business of, of us fighting about development. Clearly, we, we don't agree with one another. I think that the, the SFDA may be a little bit more functional and a little bit better prepared to handle this.
I'm in the queue.
Okay, I'm in the, I'm in the queue, I'm in the queue.
Ms. Gilliard, would you wait one minute? Before we get to you, Mr. Colley, I want to uh, say one thing. If you go back to the transcripts of the uh, of the uh, the so-called trial we had, if the question was asked, have you had any contact with the mayor? You know what the answer was on this issue? But if you don't know, maybe, maybe you'd go back to read that transcript. Because I'm not going to have you implicating, implicating me in anything I didn't do. All right, I'm Ms. Gilliard, go ahead.
Um. The word transparency gives me some angst. And the reason why it does is because um, as a council, we use it when it's convenient. But there's very, very, very few things, particularly as it relates to economic development that is transparent. And it is obvious if you go to the record, the record speaks for itself. Where it is, where it is, and what it does, what it doesn't, what's a problem, what isn't a problem. So it is, it was a problem when it, with this particular issue, when it was first brought up. And I might not have the words correct. When it was brought up, there was something about there's a mother something project that was supposed to be coming. Yeah, was supposed to be coming that was in conflict with this. So I don't know if that's the angst, or if that's the problem, or if that's the conflict. But if we have a developer who is willing and, and able to develop a three hundred million dollar project in our city and particularly in an area that has been neglected for so long, I don't see the problem. And I'll close with that.
Okay, Ms. Baker.
Okay, um, I think that we're actually speaking again on an issue that we voted on last council meeting. And I think that that's where it may be great at any participants uh, on the line currently. Because we voted and it passed six to one that the land would be conveyed. We're just here because the mayor refused to decide, to, to sign it. We're trying to move that forward. But when we speak of the transparency and the conversations over the weekend, that's nothing but an olive branch extended to the mayor and as well as everybody else to chime in further on what you would like to see from the development authority in this deal, if we do this deal. What we voted on last week, last meeting was simply conveying the land. The mayor spoke to me about some particulars, but that has nothing to do with the city. That's the development authority uh, uh, a duty at that point. And just for transparency and to know what we're doing, we haven't been funded, but yet we still have this situation that has gone now since you've heard Councilwoman Gilliard from three hundred million to four hundred and fifty million dollars.
Wow.
Four hundred and fifty million dollars and well over ten thousand jobs. And that's something that's going to be contracted. And we could, we could talk about all of those things and we can have these, these grand conversations. But we're just trying to cross the line what we've been trying to cross in November of last year when we first made that vote. And then we finally got there and we're just waiting on a signature to move forward. I can't even execute the documents for anything until we actually move from here. So with the refusal to sign, uh, uh, regardless, after it's been voted on and passed six to one, we're just trying to get the document executed. And then we can go forward and you guys can, you guys can be a part of every step of this thing. There's nothing that, where there's been a lack of transparency with our development authority.
Okay, Ms. Ral, go ahead.
Um, I, I just, I need a couple of clarification. I was actually abstained um, on our last vote. And it was just because I hadn't had time to read the document which came the day before. But my concern uh, was not so much about the development, but the fact that um, from my understanding that the benefits that would come back to the city had been removed. And so I just want clarification on that and whether or not the development authority voted on that contract to move forward.
Can I provide that, Mr. Mayor? I know I'm not.
You can.
Okay, so we haven't done that contract because we don't have the land yet. But just so you know, what will be in that comp, that contract will be them committing to at least ten thousand jobs, a parking structure for Old National Park, uh, redoing Old National Park as well as maintaining it, a walking trail and more things. These are things, as well as the possibility of assisting with, with funds. The thing is, we can't execute that document until we execute the document that was actually put. First of all, that's not even talking about what the type of tax base that this is going to create. The city gets to tax four hundred and fifty million dollars. The city gets to be able to be responsible as well as the mayor of, of, of creating ten thousand plus jobs. So this is something that should really be a no-brainer. And I hate that our audience or the participants will be able to see us debating over something like this, which will probably be the largest thing that has happened in our city.
Um, Councilman Baker, again, um, you know, I, I hear people position that I really just wanted the information. And so at the end of the day, um, you're saying that the, the, the document, which is what I understood uh, from the last meeting, um, what about the benefits? I heard originally there was some benefits that would come back to the city and it was filled out in that document and it's no longer there. So you're saying that's, that's back end now or it's forthcoming? I just, I just need to know before we go down and we convey that the developer is clear. I don't think uh, the majority of the council is against this development. We just don't have, it doesn't seem that we have all the information.
Well, it's not because five people voted yes, even including your abstent, abstention.
Right.
However, th- this so you know, the city in the document that we voted on last council meeting is going to receive directly upon the sale or the, or the conveyance to the developer uh, the same amount of money that was in the U R A for Old National Park, which I believe is five hundred nineteen thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty-five. So that's upfront. The city gets that upfront. Um, and we only have two years to complete said agreement. The deal has to be done. But, 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 but the thing is, there was never, uh, there was never a document that has come forward, that had been agreed upon. This is the first one.
Right. And, and again, like I said, the reason I didn't, because I, I didn't receive it. And so I didn't want to vote against or what, you know, that's why I was staying. So I was just trying to get clarity, clarity on that. And then my second question, if you can answer, did the development authority vote on, on that document?
No, we haven't, we haven't. We vote to, we have to vote. First, the city has to release the property. That's why I'm asking in this motion for that signature. Once the city releases the property, the development authority has to even vote to accept the property. We haven't got to that step because we've never received the property.
So, so they didn't vote on what we, what we got at the last meeting?
We, it was, what happened at the last meeting, Councilwoman, had never been executed because of a lack of a signature.
Right. I'm just thinking that they would, they would review the document before it came to us. That's all I'm asking.
No, no, no. The attorney submitted this document with us last council meeting. We voted.
The day before, right.
We, no. The, the, the point of it is, we voted on this, six to one. Whether you, whether you, six to one, and after it's over, we've never received this. So it's never gone back to the development authority for us to move forward.
Right. I, I'm just saying the cycle of things. I would have thought that before it came to us, it would have been voted on by the body. And, and I, you answered my question, they have not.
We can't vote on something we don't have. We don't have the land to vote on details about what we're going to do with it.
Right. But the terms of the agreement, I would have thought would have been discussed with that body who was responsible for the development.
The terms is we have two years to do something with it and upon selling it, the city first, before anything happens, gets over half a million dollars.
Okay, uh, Ms. Willis. Ms. Willis, and then I have my seat, so then we'll go, we'll move on. Ms. Willis?
Um, yes, um, I would like to ditto what you said to Mr. Colley. Keep my name out your mouth, um, when it comes to what happened in December. The transcript, which is, I think is three hundred pages, is very clear. And I'm going to put on record, if you say anything else about that and accuse me of doing anything else, I will sue you.
Okay, thank you.
The mayor, would you please explain?
Yes.
To this um, um, council, why you refuse to sign the document? And I, I would like to say, there were several people who voted no for us to recreate a city. Does that mean because the city passed a majority that they don't get to participate in what happens in the city? Their consensus is not taken into consideration when it comes to decisions in the city. We should not communicate to them because they voted no. Um, I'm hearing that the olive branch was given to several council members over the weekend. And because I voted no, nobody called my phone, nobody had, uh, nobody wanted to talk with me about my concerns. And so, and I agree with Councilmember Ral. Why are we being asked to convey a multi-million dollar land deal over to a development authority when they haven't even talked about it? They don't even know what's going on. And to be transparent, several of us have talked to some of the people we appointed to that development authority. And they have said they haven't convened in over three months.
Okay, are you finished, Ms.?
Yes.
I need to point.
No, it's my turn. And then we're going to move on with this, because we're not going to battle back and forth all day. First of all, let me say this. I believe in this project. If it comes to fruition, I believe it'd be good for Old National. I also want to be known that nobody on this council has done more for Old National than I have done over the last twenty years with the help of the people. So I'm, I'm vested in Old National. Third thing I want to tell you is, this ain't the first transaction that I've been involved with. I was in the, as commissioner, I was involved with the transaction for uh, Atlantic Station. I was involved with the transaction for uh, uh, Camp Creek Marketplace. I was in job with the transaction with Chat Hill. So I'm not, I'm not stranger to this deal. I'm just looking at something that we have to make sure that our citizens, as we, as we push this type of deal, that our citizens are in the right position. So here's my plan, my point. I think that any, 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 any document like this should have what is called deliverables. Let me explain that. One deliverable may be in fact that within the first year, that you would put in the infrastructure. Now, let me tell you how important that is. That's just a deliverable. If, if a developer puts in infrastructure the first year, he's now vested totally in that, in that project. Even if he, even if he goes belly up, then we'll get the land back plus the infrastructure. The second thing. On a two-year deal, sounds great. I'm for that two years. If you don't do it in the two years, that sounds great. But in the twenty-fourth month of that two years, in the last month of the two years, you haven't done anything, no infrastructure or nothing. He could simply go out there and cut down some trees and still be bound to the contract. I'm just saying, we need to put something in here that's going to be, that's going to be good for the citizens and this city. I love the part, I got no problem with, well, I do have some problems, but I love the, I love the project. The, 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 the deal we had on the table, when this project came, that deal was gone. It was gone. We didn't try to take the land back or do it. That project was gone, the African project. It was totally gone. I like what Ms. Ral said. And I hear, I heard people hearing what she's saying now. At some point in time, and I, I've worked with development authorities for nineteen years. But for some, at some point in time, we own the land, we are in the catbird seat. We don't have developers dictating to us. We dictate to them and we come up with a, uh, come up with something in the middle. But we can't have, I've had many, many developers tell me, I'm leaving because you won't give the land. Well, go ahead on. I'm telling you, this is what we need to make this deal work. And I've had my, my, my person on the development authority told me, not only has she not heard, she not, she don't know anything about this, she hadn't even been to a meeting. Not one meeting since January when I put her on there. And that's the fact that she don't want to go. She just not, she had one meeting at council that, that was the only meeting she heard from. So and, and, and to sit back and say, bring me a document that you all haven't talked about and want me to sign it, convey this land to this person, then you want to talk to your development authority? I got a, I got a fundamental problem with that. But as for the land, as for the project, I'm one hundred percent, one hundred percent for it. Now, you all can go in and take full votes and say, I don't have the, I don't have the right to do what I did. But if you take full votes on that issue, you won't hear the last of it. Because there's two issues. One side saying you do, one side that don't. I don't want to have a legal battle, legal issue with that. I just want to, I just want to sit down with Mr. Baker and say, hey, Mr. Baker, this project is good. Why do we, why do we entertain doing X, Y, Z, X, Y, Z? And then once we agree with all that, let's shake hands and stand up and applaud the project and move on. But I'm not going to give nobody anything, you know, I've seen these developers over the years, guys, I've seen them. And I know how they work. You got to put some skin in the game right now to make sure that you're serious about these thirty-story buildings you're talking about putting up in this amphitheater. So all I'm asking is, give me some infrastructure, give me something. I said your word that you're going to do something. We didn't take nobody's word in uh, in, in, in that station. We didn't take nobody's word up in uh, up, up on Camp Creek. They take no word. They had vested interest in the project. They moved on the project. They had timelines on the project. They met their timelines. And hence we got the projects. Here we have no timelines. So that's all I have to say about it. You can all can vote the way you want to. But I just think that we need to have a solid contract with these.
Mr. Mayor, if I may provide clarity just partially.
I'd like to ask for the vote.
Okay, Councilmember Ral. We're voting, you voting now, um, Councilmember Ral. Councilmember Gons. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Willis?
No.
The motion is to authorize the city manager to execute the I G A and quit claims for Old National Development. Okay, so I'm going to call it roll call. Councilmember Ral.
She voted no in the chat box.
Councilmember Gons. Councilmember Willis?
No.
Councilmember Gilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Uh, um, I can't make a statement, so I.
Is that a yes?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Colley?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Gons, are you there?
He said, you can hear me in the chat box. No, we cannot hear you in the chat box, Councilwoman.
Okay, so the vote is five to six, five to two.
Okay.
It passes.
For the record, I still would not sign the contract. I still hold that true. I still hold to the fact that uh, that it's clear that I don't have to sign the contract and I will seek legal advice on that issue.
Can our attorney opine before you just end it like that?
Not my attorney, your attorney.
The city, the city attorney.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, actually, we have an attorney who, who you guys have procured to represent the council on this and he is present. Uh, Mr. Strickland, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I'm here.
Yeah, if you could present your questions to Mr. Strickland.
Question is. I, I have two questions, Mr. Strickland. I just wanted to know, um, based on our charter, does shall, when, when it says the mayor shall contract, does that, shall sign all contracts? Does it mean shall like thou shall not kill or he's supposed to do it or not do it when he wants to? But, but shall, what's your opinion on shall as far as uh, the mayor's duty to sign said documents? And second, um, yeah, yeah, that, that, that's my first question.
First off, use of the word shall is interpreted legally to me, uh, to mean must.
Okay, so with that being said, what we, the document that we voted on in the last meeting, the mayor should have been applying his signature to that document.
Are you referring to language in the charter?
Yes.
I apologize, I didn't have that up. Certainly don't want to misquote it.
I just posted it in the chat box, the city charter.
You're referring to uh, powers and duties of the mayor. Uh, section three point two two of the charter. Subsection B. Where it provides the mayor shall. Uh, subsection B four. Reading those together, the mayor shall sign as a matter of course, on behalf of the city, all written and approved contracts. If the contract, which would be the I G A, the intergovernmental agreement, is a contract, if the contract has been approved uh, by the city council, I would interpret that requirement to be that the city, uh, that the agreement would be signed on behalf of the city by the mayor.
Thank you.
That section, that section also provides that within the same section of the charter, that the city council may delegate contract signing authority to the city manager to the extent allowed by law.
And I think, and, and for the record, that's what we just did because of the mayor neglected to sign or refused to sign.
But never, mayor never.
I mean, I'm clear. I, I still have the floor, Mr. Mayor, correct?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Uh, Attorney, City Attorney, uh, so the action that we took because of his refusal is illegal and invalid action, correct?
Uh, I don't see the mayor's refusal to sign as being necessary in the analysis of whether or not it's proper to by city council vote authorize the city manager to execute that contract. Which is my understanding, that's what the motion was, and that's what has just passed five to two.
Okay, so in your opinion, the city manager can now, based off this motion, execute?
If the city council has clarified, which it sounds like they have, that the version that was passed at the last meeting is the version that should go forward without any further discussion as to edits or amendments or changes and be executed because that was what was intended to have been passed. Uh, then yes, the city manager can execute it based on city council's authority.
Thank you. And, and lastly, I just wanted to say for the record, all of those deliverables that anybody may feel that we should have, it's not a deliverable to the city directly as a developer is not doing a deal with the city. He's doing it with the development authority. And at the appropriate time, the development authority will include those deliverables in the agreement with said developer. I just didn't want people to think that we're giving a property haphazardly without uh, all of the smart people and attorneys around from the development authority to a developer. The city is not giving a property to the development authority. It's actually conveying, I mean, to the developer, it's actually simply conveying the property to the development authority. And we have two.
Let me just, let me say one thing, we'll get off of this. Madam Attorney? Madam Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
I had a conversation with you, did I not?
Yes, you and I. Yes, you and I.
And I told you what my, told you what my concerns were, right?
Um, about this issue?
About this issue?
There, there are two issues. There are, there are this issue, which is the, the duty to sign. But then there's a separate issue that involves the mayor pro temp signing.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. That's something all different. But the ability to sign, we talked about it and I told you why, right?
Yeah, you did tell me why you did not want to sign.
Listen, listen. And you said to me that what I was telling you made sense, right? Just stay like it is. If you, if you say I didn't say it, say you didn't say it.
That I said that, that.
What I told you makes sense.
Well, I, I didn't say that it made sense. I said that I, I understood what your concerns were. Cause I, what I don't, what I try not to do is I try not to give my opinion when you guys.
Okay, okay. And I just want to stand in your, want you to stand in your place and say what was right. You don't want to do it, that's fine.
No, I heard you. I did hear you out, Mayor. I heard you out and I listened to what your concerns were and I said I understood what you told me your concerns were.
Oh, well, okay, you want to go out that way, that's fine. That was not what you said. Mr. Strickland, Mr. Mayor, let me say something, Mr. Strickland.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Did we have the same conversation?
I'm not sure if it was the same conversation, but you and I did have a conversation.
Oh, everybody want to jump ship now?
No, sir, no, sir, I'm not trying to jump ship. You did express, you did express to me what, uh, your reasons were for not executing the document, and I did say that that made sense.
Okay, document, would you say what? It made sense, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's, let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one point that I have to make if I can, sir, based on what kind of was here. I want to ask, uh, uh, Madam Walker, if you can address this issue. Since we was talking about this and the narrative was saying that, uh, the DA have to even, they have to have a meeting to, to vote on if they even want to accept the property. And all I'm asking for is can that be done? Cause we're conveying it over, given the, um, the, 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 the city manager, the authorities who are executed if need be before he signs. Can we make sure that the DA votes on that to, and, uh, that they want to accept the property before we convey the land over? Or is there something that, if it had, if we can do that, I think that will satisfy, uh, some questions that have been asked here today. And based on the narrative that we're speaking of, that that's what was it, that the DA has to vote on even accepting the property. So can that, so I don't want to put the cart before the horse. So if you can get that done and once they accept it, then, you know, this is probably done arbitrarily.
Yeah, I can, for, for clarification, I, I will say that, um, that since November, the development authority, um, has been, I don't want to use the word anxious, but I want to say they are excited about this development. They're fully aware of it. They actually have an outside attorney who has communicated with Mr. Strickland, um, as well as, uh, previous council who was appointed. So the development authority has had numerous conversations on this property. They are aware that the city is conveying it in some capacity. Now, the development authority has not, did not approve this first because they're basically at the council's will. So for them to approve it first, it would mean that they're giving you a document that, okay, we approved this, now you approve it. And it really doesn't work that way because the city's in a better bargaining position because it's your property. So it's really up to them to accept what you put out versus them accepting something and telling you to approve it. So what will happen next is this document, um, pursuant to the vote today with, once it's signed by the city manager, the development authority will be told at their next meeting, okay, this is what the city is willing to do. Take it or leave it. Um, they'll vote at that meeting, and then if they move forward, then they will have conversations, multiple conversations with the developer to come together with a development agreement. Um, when I spoke to the mayor, uh, when, when he and I spoke privately, as well as when he spoke today, and probably every meeting that he spoke on this, I have actually written down what all his concerns were. Um, I do plan to, to tell that to the development authority. I think that you guys have put some amazing people on the development authority. I've been working with them, um, for the past year. And I think that, uh, they're reasonable, they're smart, they're intelligent. I think that they will, um, put together an agreement that, uh, that they believe is in the city's best interest. So I think that's part of this next process to work with the developer and comments from the public to put together a development agreement that is mutually agreeable and that can make this project move forward.
Thank, thank you so much, Madam Attorney.
I'm going, I'm going, are you finished, Scott, Cory?
Yes, sir, I'm done. Thank you, sir.
I'm going, uh, we're going to move on. I'm just going to say, I just don't like attorneys to say one thing, one time, and say something the other, but let's move on. Nick, next item, uh, Madam Clerk.
Uh, you need to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, someone else entertained me, I motioned to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
There, second.
You're adjourning the work session.
To adjour, to executive session, right?
No.
To adjouring work session. Motion, I make a motion to adjourn the work session.
Oh, second.
I'm going to move to second, in discussion.
I have discussion.
Yes.
I just, I would, I would like to clarify, uh, with the city clerk for the edification of our very engaged residents who tried to follow along in that discussion, that the motion that we passed was to transfer land to the city development authority and not private developers, but to actually the development authority, which are nine city of South Fulton residents.
All right.
Is that what we passed, uh, Madam Clerk?
The motion was to authorize the city, city manager to to execute the IGA and the quit claim for the whole national project.
To the development authority, not to this private developer.
No, not to the private developer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Row. You're voting to adjourn. Councilmember Guns. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleen.
Aye.
And Councilmember Baker. The motion is approved. Uh, work session is adjourned. You have to switch over from work session to regular meeting in Nova's.
You want to do that?
Is the agenda working in Nova's? Because I can't, I can't get into the queue with Nova's.
The queue is not working in Nova's.
We're, we're closing out the work session, so now the, uh, regular meeting is open. Should be open. So you should be able to do your speaker queues.
It had just appeared, thank you.
Am I in? Where's the attorney for agenda?
Okay, it's up now.
Hold up, one moment, please.
I'm in.
Tess, Tess, Tess.
We can hear you, Councilmember Guns.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Welcome to the regular council meeting of South City of South Fulton. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you give the roll call, please?
Roll call for May twenty sixth, regular council meeting. Councilmember Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Colleen.
Present.
Councilmember Reeves. Councilmember Gilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Guns.
Here.
Councilmember Row. Also present is, Councilmember Row is here, is Mayor Edwards, the city manager, Mr. Donald, city attorney, Ms. Walker. You have a call.
Okay, is, uh, Chaplain Warren, you there?
I'm present. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, uh, I, I might, now you for the pledge and invocation, please.
Yes, sir. Just before prayer, just like the letter, I know that I spoke with Corporal Curtis with our police department. He would like to convey to you all, uh, his appreciation for your prayers, concern, and he wants all to know that he's recovering well at home. Let us pray. Oh God, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts for the many blessings that are truly before us. We thank you for guarding our city and pouring out your virtues of wisdom and knowledge. Wisdom and knowledge upon our mayor, our council, city and assistant city manager, and all leadership and authorities in our city. Oh God, we do come against any and all strongholds from the north, south, east, and west that are against us in any form or fashion. May they fall even now as we pray. We ask you today to bless our city. We ask you today for peace and prosperity. We ask you today to protect our first responders from the COVID nineteen and any other forces seen. We ask you today for victory in all that we do, and last but not least, may we be the testimony that will give others hope in all their endeavors. This we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. God bless you all.
Okay, thank you, Reverend. Uh, Madam Clerk.
The first item is presentation and announcement, council discussion on twenty nineteen audit presentation by Molding and Jenkins.
Good afternoon to everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I hope everyone had a great Memorial Day weekend, and, uh, thanks for having me here today to present virtually the city's September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen on audit results. Um, hopefully you've had a chance to look at the financial statements, uh, the management letter, and the auditors' discussion and analysis. As far as, uh, today's presentation, I'm just going to kind of touch on some of the highlights, uh, from the auditors' discussion and analysis. It's the same presentation I presented to your finance committee a couple of weeks ago. And, um, so if you have any questions, if you could wait until the end, and then we'll address those, uh, questions at that time. All right. I was going to share my screen so that I could, um, maneuver, if that's okay? One second. All right, can everyone see this screen okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, um, all right, so right here, I just want to kind of give an update about our governmental practice. Uh, it continues to be one of the largest niches in the firm, representing about twenty-eight percent of the firm's practice. Um, we audit over four hundred and fifty, uh, governmental clients in southeast. Uh, that includes about a hundred and fifteen cities. And of those four hundred and fifty clients that we serve, about a hundred and fifteen of those received the GFOA award in excellence in financial reporting. Um, again, this year, um, the city's third year of being in operation, the city has issued a comprehensive annual financial report, a CAFR, uh, which is being, or has been submitted to GFOA for participation in that program. So hats off for, uh, management and staff for working very hard, uh, to issue the city's first comprehensive annual financial report, uh, which is a little bit more, um, enhanced than your basic financial statements from the prior year. Uh, it includes the letter of transmittal that's written by management. It includes additional budget to actual schedules for your non-major governmental funds. And then also includes a statistical section, which has financial, uh, comparative information, uh, over the last three years, and ultimately you will have two years of information that you'll be comparing, uh, once you get to that point. As far as the audit engagement team, I was the partner responsible for the overall audit engagement with twenty-one years of experience. Uh, this year, I had a different person to do the quality assurance review, uh, which was Josh Carroll. He's a director and he has twelve years of experience. And then we also had two other, um, accounting or auditing staff that were on the engagement as well. And we all spend about a hundred percent of our time doing governmental audits. Uh, down below just some other industries that we provide services to and other services that we provide other than your traditional accounting and, uh, tax services. As far as the financial statements, the financial statements are the responsibility of the mayor, council, and management. Our responsibility as your independent auditor is to give an opinion on those financial statements, on whether they are material or not. And we've issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, which is what you would hope to get from the external and independent audit. Um, you'll see that the audit report date was as of March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, which means that the city met the March thirty-first deadline for submitting its financial report, its CAFR, to the Department of Audits as well as submitting it to GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, for participation in the, uh, award program. So hats off, uh, to management and staff, uh, for achieving, um, those deadlines and those goals, uh, especially during the outbreak of the pandemic that occurred. And we had to kind of work remotely, uh, those last few weeks to kind of get a lot of things done. So hats off to management and staff, uh, for working very hard to meet those deadlines and for issuing the city's first CAFR. Uh, we also had a report in accordance with, uh, government auditing standards, uh, where you will see the, the two findings that were cited, uh, one material weakness and one significant deficiency. And we'll talk about that a little later in the presentation as well, but it also had a, an audit, um, an audit report date as of March twenty-sixth. Uh, moving right along, um, as far as our relationship with management, we received full cooperation with management, staff, and others. Uh, there were no disagreements with management on accounting issues or financial reporting matters. Uh, we did have a few audit adjustments, which too did result in, in findings, and we'll talk about that a little later. Uh, we did have one pass audit adjustment that came to our attention when we received the updated attorney letter, um, pertaining to an unrecorded contingent liability, um, that would have been, uh, recorded in the uh, government-wide financial statements or governmental activities, uh, for two hundred thousand dollars, but it deemed to be immaterial at that time. So we passed on posting that audit adjustment. As far as our independence, we are independent of the city and its financial reporting process. Uh, there were, uh, in accordance with the AICPA professional standards, uh, there were no fees paid to Malden Jenkins for any type of management advisory services that would have impacted our independence as your external and independent auditor. All right, the next three slides, kind of go over some financial trends. And, um, twenty-seven, this is looking at your fund balance over the last three, three years, uh, looking at your general fund and then your other governmental funds. And so in twenty seventeen, your first year of operation, which was about a five-month period, um, you had a, a huge deficit in your fund balance, which most new cities do. Uh, you had about six point five million dollar deficit in fund balance for your general fund, which you only had one fund that year. Um, moving to, back up, so, yeah, moving to twenty eighteen, you had your deficit increased to about eight point seven million dollars. Um, and in that year, you did add four other governmental funds. The, uh, multiple grant fund, the hotel, motel tax fund, the capital project fund, um, capital grant fund as well. And so with those fund balances, it came to about one point two million dollars. Uh, then in twenty nineteen, uh, your fund balance for your general fund went to a positive ten point six million dollars. And then your other governmental funds, which included the new TSPLOS fund, you had a total fund balance of twenty-three point two million dollars in twenty nineteen. But the majority of that does pertain to the new TSPLOS fund, which had about twenty-one point three million dollars of fund balance. A lot of times, people think that fund balance equates to cash, and a lot of times, that's not the case. Uh, but for you all, um, your fund balance of ten point six million dollars was very liquid when you compare it to your cash, uh, on hand as of, uh, September thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Your cash was about twelve point eight million dollars, which exceeded your fund balance of ten point six million dollars. And that's, that's good. And so again, your fund balance was very liquid. And again, as of nine thirty, twenty nineteen, again, that's a snapshot in time, doesn't mean that you're. And again, as of nine thirty, twenty nineteen, again, that's a snapshot in time, doesn't mean that you're at that amount throughout the year, but at nine thirty, twenty nineteen, that's where you were. The next slide is looking at your fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures over the last three periods. And um you can see in twenty seventeen, again with one fund, first year of operations, you had a a negative ratio of uh thirty-six percent, thirty-six. And so a good, a good rule of thumb is to have anywhere from two to three months reserve or anywhere from sixteen to twenty-five percent positive uh under normal circumstances. And so again, in twenty seventeen, you had that negative ratio of thirty-six percent and you all had to rely on a tax anticipation note that year of about eleven point eight million dollars, uh, which was paid off by um December thirty-first of twenty seventeen. Moving to twenty eighteen, that that ratio for your general fund was a negative sixteen point nine percent. And then all of your governmental funds combined, it was a negative fourteen point five percent. That year you had to rely on a twelve million dollar tax anticipation note, which was paid off by December thirty-first of twenty eighteen. Jumping to twenty nineteen, you see you had a positive ratio uh for your general fund of twenty point one percent or two point four months reserve. In that year, you had enough to get you through subsequent months after year end until your property taxes came in. And so you didn't have to rely on the tax anticipation note that year. Um, and then when you combine uh all of your governmental funds for twenty nineteen, which includes the new uh confiscated asset fund, that percentage was sixty-one point one percent or seven point three months reserves when you combine all of your governmental funds. And so again, that's pretty good, um, where you want to be in that third year of operations. The next slide is looking at your, your oper, your main operating fund, which is your general fund, looking at your revenues for twenty nineteen. Now, total revenues for twenty nineteen came in around seventy-one million dollars. Compared to twenty eighteen, it was about fifty point two million dollars. So that's a twenty point eight million dollar increase over the prior year, mainly due to increase in property taxes of about fifteen million dollars and then other taxes combined increased about three million dollars. Um, so your, your largest uh revenue source, of course, is property and motor vehicle taxes. It came in about thirty point five million dollars at twenty nineteen, in fiscal year twenty nineteen, or forty-three percent of total revenues. Uh, then you had sales taxes uh that came in about twenty-six point four million dollars or thirty-seven percent of total revenues. Other taxes again, three point seven million dollars or five percent of total revenues. And then you had intergovernmental uh revenues of four point four million dollars that represented about six percent of total revenues as well. Next slide is looking at your general fund expenditures for twenty nineteen. Uh, twenty nineteen, you came in at about fifty-two point nine million dollars. And then uh twenty eighteen, you came in at about fifty-one point three million dollars. That's only a one point six million dollar increase over the prior year. Uh, you all did a good job in controlling spending and uh in the second, uh, over the second year of operation um compared to uh in previous, within the first period. Uh, but again, your revenues outpaced your expenditures uh for twenty nineteen, uh, which contributed to the increase in your fund balance for your general fund. But your main, uh, your largest uh function of the expenditures, like most local governments, is public safety. It came in at about twenty-six point seven million dollars or fifty percent of your total expenditures. Your second largest item was public works, came in at about eleven point four million dollars or twenty-one percent of total expenditures. And then your third largest item was uh general government uh of about seven point four million dollars, which represents about fourteen percent of total expenditures. So again, uh, pretty good in controlling your expenditures and ensuring that it increased by um not a material amount over the prior year. Alright, now we go into the findings, uh, again, this year we had two findings. It is an improvement over the prior year, uh, last year, twenty eighteen, you had four findings. Uh, this first finding deals with capital asset reporting. Um, we received the city's uh capital assets. Uh, we noted that we didn't see any infrastructure. And we, we, we recall from the prior year and looking at the intergovernmental agreement that you all have with the uh Fulton County, that the county would, you know, maintain all of the infrastructure assets uh with, uh, within the city until November twenty-eighteen. Then at that point, they would transfer, they would transfer over to city at the net book value that the county recorded on those amounts uh prior to transferring over to you all. And so we may got with management and then they uh got the information that was needed and updated the CAFER assets footnotes. Um, so a material adjustment of about two hundred and sixty-three million dollars of infrastructure assets um was reported and reported along with um about five point three million dollars of current year depreciation uh on those assets for the current year. So we just gotta make sure that we're looking at the intergovernmental agreements carefully and other arrangements uh when it comes to uh capital assets and other related items, just to ensure that everything is recorded properly in the, in the right period as well. Uh, then the second finding um was, was considered a significant deficiency towards the end of fieldwork in a few weeks out prior to the deadline. Uh, in reviewing some of the, 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 the work papers or the trial balances, I noticed that there's about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of intergovernmental receivable uh that we didn't have any work papers on. And so after the staff got with management, it was determined uh that this balance uh should not have been recorded. Um, there should, there were no uh remaining intergovernmental receivables or payable balances uh between Fulton County and the city as of uh September thirty, twenty nineteen. And so an adjustment was made to zero that amount off of your balance sheet and to probably show those expenditures in the general fund as public works expenditures of about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So you just gotta make sure every year that we're looking at all of your balance sheet items, your amounts, and make sure that you have supporting documentation on those, on those balances. Again, throughout the years, especially at year end. Um, this year, we only had one uh management point or management recommend, recommendation for improvement. Um, this is an improvement over the prior year, uh, twenty eighteen, you had four management points. And so uh just one note for this year uh pertaining to uh P cars. And we looked at uh twenty-two P car transactions and noted two out of the uh twenty-two transactions were missing supporting documentation. Um, so I want to make sure that you're uh keeping up with all of the supporting documentation that supports the P car transactions and make sure you have proper, you know, indication of proper review and proper approval uh of those transactions as well. Now we're going into the new GASB announcement. Um, a couple of them I just want to kind of point out. We, the GASB eighty-seven deals with uh with leases. And uh this is something I mentioned to you all last year, we've been trying to uh inform our clients over the last several years about this new standard, which would be applicable for you all in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And um, so basically you're gonna see a lot of your leases that some might have been reported as operating leases, only disclosing your footnotes, be recorded as a, an asset and liability um in your financial statements. Um, so again, we are encouraging all of our clients to, to look at all lease agreements, lease arrangements to ensure that you are properly recording those in accordance with GASB eighty-seven in fiscal year um twenty twenty-one. And again, this is whether you are a leasee or a lease-lesser. Um, you can see here, you're in the less C, a leasee, you should recognize the lease liability as the lease asset at the commencement of the lease term. If you, if you're the less or you recognize the lease receivable and a deferred inflow of resource at the commencement of the lease and you recognize the revenue over the term of the life, uh, life of the uh lease agreement. And so again, just make sure you all have um good policies and procedures in place where you are capturing all of these agreements and reviewing them carefully to ensure that this uh standard is uh implemented correctly. Um, and the other standard I want to talk about is uh statement number ninety-one, which deals with conduit and debt. And um, again, you all do have a development authority, um, this year it is reported as a proprietary fund within your um financial statements, they blended component unit. And so as you all start, you know, issuing debt on behalf of others, third parties and things of that nature, although that liability will not be reported in your financial statements, but you are required to disclose uh that as conduit and debt in your footnotes. And some of the uh, I know the mayor can probably attest to this, um, being over at Fulton County, sometimes you're, or dealing with um a vested land or ADA, um, you have these bonds that were issued in previous years, you know, twenty, twenty years ago. And then you're trying to gather that information from them, don't know what the outstanding balance is at year end. And a lot of development authorities struggle in gathering that information. And so under the current standard, um, you're, you're allowed to disclose what the issuance amount is if you don't know what the outstanding balance is at the year end that you're having your audit done. This new standard says going forward for you all this year, uh, twenty twenty-two, you can no longer disclose just the issuance amount, you have to disclose what the outstanding balance is at year end. So as you start, you know, issuing, the developers start, start issuing debt on, on behalf of third parties, um, we, we encourage you to make sure you have policies and procedures in place to make sure you're keeping track of those outstanding balances uh on a, on the, on each, every year uh going forward. And uh make sure you have good communications and good contacts with the third parties to make sure that information's being gathered so that you can disclose that information in your financial foot, um, financial statement footnotes. Um, those are the GASB standards that I wanted to kind of talk to you all about. Uh, we'll share with you all, I can share it with the um finance committee. Uh, Joel Black, uh, he was a government partner in our Atlanta office for, you know, eighteen years, I guess, or so. And uh, or, and he has been uh, and, you know, instrumental at our firm, very technical, um, leading a, a lot of our um, uh, teachings, you know, locally and and nationally. Um, but he's, he has taken a position, um, the chairperson position at the GASB. Uh, the GASB sets all of the standards, auditing and accounting standards for all governments, whether it's federal, state or local governments. And it's a huge honor, we're so happy for him. And so that's a seven-year term for him, he's moved up to, to Connecticut. And so uh, again, we're very proud to have um someone from our firm to, to be serving as the next chairperson of GASB who sets all the standards. And so, so hopefully he can kind of uh cut back on these new standards. So I think we're up to GASB ninety-five now, so, but um, he's, like he told me, he's only one person on the board. Um, we continue to offer free continuing education classes to our, our clients. And you can see the various topics um that we've um had over the last several years. And your staff have, um, the management and staff have participated in those uh free CPE classes. And so again, we've tried to do that four times throughout the year in different locations, in Atlanta, of course, all always have a session in Atlanta and then we have it in other locations as well. And then we also send out newsletters to our governmental clients as well to kind of keep you abreast of, of things that um, that are coming out that you should be aware of. And so with that being said, that concludes my uh presentation. It was a, um, a pleasure serving the city, uh, again, and uh some, some great accomplishments. Um, the numbers are looking very, very good. And uh, and again, the first CAFER completed this year, so hats off to management and staff for doing a great job. And at this time, I can address any questions that you all may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Mr. Khalid. Are you there?
Yeah, I just came out of the queue and uh I'm gonna come back in at the end. I, I, I'm sure Ms. Gilger has some questions.
No, you, you already in the queue.
Well, I, I, I'm yielding to counsel in the queue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, um. Hi, Mr. Moses, how are you?
Uh, pretty good, and you?
I'm good. Um, I want um to ask you a couple of questions so that as, as you as our subject matter expert to perhaps give counsel um some clarity as it relates to finance committees and what they do um and what, what it has been your experience um with finance committees in so many cities. So one of those things is that um, the finance committee in many instances, based on my research, there are two things. The word oversight is, is the trigger, but it really means just review. And the only authority that a finance committee can really have is to provide advice based on whatever financials they review, look at or whatever, and make recommendations to counsel and hopefully those recommendations will be helpful. And so and al, and also in many instances, the finance committee will receive information, um, will interact with the CPA firm. And um, um, when I say interact, I mean receive the audit report, review it, look at it, make a recommendation to counsel um before counsel gets the report. Now, I'm not saying that that's one hundred percent of the time, but that does happen. So those three things, oversight, advisory and receiving the report um, um, are not unusual, they're not bad, they're not threatening. They are really everything in, as far as everything I've researched, to assist counsel. And that is really the role of the committee. And the fact that the committee is composed of whether it's good, bad or indifferent of counsel and um citizens, just like our parks advisory committee, it would be really, really helpful, I believe, to um the council. So I just wanted to ask whether or not it's your experience in the industry that, that is what occurs.
Uh, sure, and you summed it up quite well. Uh, that's actually what a finance committee um does, provide oversight as far as advice and recommendation, things of that nature to the governing body. And it could be made up of um people outside of the governing body, whether it's management staff or someone from, you know, as a citizen. I'll give you some examples, uh, not all of my clients do have finance committees, but some of my clients do. Uh, DeKalb County, uh, I audit them. Um, they have a committee called the uh Finance Audit and Budget Committee. I present, once the audit is done, uh, they schedule a meeting, I present to the Fab Committee, go over the audit results, uh, answer any questions that they may have. And then I'm done, I don't even present to the full board. Uh, they present the report along with the CFO uh to the board. And I never attend that meeting. Um, that's just how their setup is. Um, I also audit the Atlanta Independent School System. Um, and I present to their audit committee and present the results. Um, they come up with a creative action plan, uh, with management if there's findings and management points to make sure that management get, get those things resolved. And then they present the report uh along with the CFO to the governing body. And I don't present to the full board. On the other hand, Fulton County Board of Education, I audit them as well. And um, I present the art results to their audit committee. Um, then once that's done, they'll schedule a month later and then I'll present to the full board. And so um, what you summed up um is exactly the case. And again, they make recommendations and um they give advice and to the full board and then things are voted on at that point.
Thank you. I would like to leave, uh, um, thank you very much, Mr. Moses. I would like to uh turn it back over to Mr. Khalid since I'd like to yield to him, since he yielded to me, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Right here.
Right here.
Thank you, uh, thank you so much, Congressman Gilliard. Yeah, first I just want to start with, uh, you know, anybody who's been in a relationship with anybody knows it's hard to talk about money. So I'm just gonna ask that we're all patient with each other through this difficult conversation. Mr. Moses, uh, it sounds like you already covered the fact that it's common for, uh, finance committee, uh, for, yeah, for finance committees to have some oversight authority and to receive the audit before it comes to council so that they can send it on to council with some of their recommendations. I just wanted to ask you a little, a few more questions about the structure of finance committees. Really, the, the, I'll just ask both questions together and let you answer. Is it, should everyone on the finance committee have a finance degree? And is it, is it common that, what it, how, how, what is common for the makeups? Is it, is it all citizens? Is it like a mix of citizen staff and electeds? Like what have you seen work well, I guess is the advice we're asking?
Sure, I mean, it is not required for, uh, a governing body member that sits on a finance committee to have an accounting or finance background. I mean, a lot of our, our governing body members, they, they don't have accounting or finance. And so that's not a prerequisite, uh, for, uh, being able to sit on a committee. Uh, I said, I've seen committees, uh, again, have someone from the, the citizen, from the population, uh, within that jurisdiction to sit on a committee. Sometimes I haven't, I've seen, um, you know, manage, you know, certain, like, you know, city manager or finance director, individuals like that on the committee as well, which you would want to have those individuals, uh, sitting on that committee. But some, you know, just having a diverse groups, uh, different backgrounds, uh, can help. And I, and, and that's worked, uh, in the past and currently. And so it just kind of depends. Um, but just having a, an accounting or finance background doesn't mean that you, you, you have to have someone with that, um, expertise. But if you have someone, uh, that has a finance and accounting background, that's, um, you know, that's on the city council, it is good to have, you know, one of them on that committee as well.
Are you finished, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes, thank you, thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Moses.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Ms. Willis?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Moses, for your presentation. Um, how many cities do you audit for in the, uh, South Fulton region?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
How many cities do you audit in the South Fulton region? We have fifteen, Fulton County has fifteen cities, um, do you audit?
Yes, so we audit, I probably missed some of them, we audit, um, Haytville, College Park. We audit Fairburn, uh, we audit, um, the city of Decatur, well, that's in DeKalb. We audit, um, just make sure I get my counties right, Shamenly is in DeKalb.
So in Fulton County, you audit, you, in Fulton County, you audit Fairburn, Haytville, College Park, and then, uh, so you have four cities in Fulton County. Out of all those cities, are we the only city that has a audit committee? Finance committee, not audit committee, finance committee?
So out of the ones I serve?
Yes.
You know, because we audit Sandy Springs, um, we audit some more, but they're not on my list. So the ones that I audit, and that's College Park, um, Haytville, Fairburn.
To include Sandy Springs, because Sandy Springs is in Fulton County?
Yes, but, yes, they're not on my list, so I don't, I don't audit them. The other partner within the firm, so they may have one, so, so, uh, I don't audit any of the ones in North Fulton. But I think you all are the only one, um, of the cities that has a finance committee, that I audit.
Right.
That's on my list.
And so I'm gonna help you out, because I've already done my research. Sandy Springs, they don't have an audit committee. And so the audit committees that you have spoken with us about,
Audit committee?
They don't have a finance committee, um, I have the floor, thank you. Um, the finance committees that you have spoken with us about are on the county level and Fulton County school board level, correct? You spoke of, uh, Gwinnett County, okay, so they're all county level. Um, their budgets are, uh, would you, um, agree? We know the school budget is triple our size. Uh, would you agree that the county, um, the counties that you audit, their budgets are twice the budget that we have?
Oh, yeah, sure. Um, now, I did have a smaller city, that's, that's way smaller than you all. Um, that, I don't know if they still have a finance committee, City of Carston, they're in DeKalb. They've, they've had a finance committee before. Um, so, so they're the smallest, uh, client that I've had that's, that's, that's had a finance committee. But, but yes, like the Calb County, Fulton, um, Board of Education, a lot of public schools, their, their budget is much higher than you all's.
And these are counties? So, and? So, um, no city in the, in Fulton County region that you know of, that you're auditing currently aside of us have audit, have finance committees?
I can verify that with you, um, with the other partners, uh, because I, we, we do audit a lot of cities in Fulton County. And so I can verify with the others if any of the others have finance committees. But the, the ones that I audit, um, you all are the only one in Fulton County.
Okay, thank you, I've already verified, but if you could, if you wanted, because colleagues don't like to believe each other. So if you would, um, forward that information back to us, that'd be helpful as well, thanks so much.
Okay.
Ms. Rowell, I thought I saw you on the queue. Ms. Rowell? Ms. Rowell? Are you there?
Yes, my question has had the answer.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much, we appreciate you. Uh, and the clerk, you can call the next item.
The next item is?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
The next item is adoption of May twenty-sixth meeting, are there any changes to the agenda?
Are there any agenda changes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, I'm saying yes, I'm sorry, uh, my, my, my audio was muted, I do have changes.
What is your change, sir?
I would like to remove items eight through fourteen from the consent agenda. I just want, I just have some questions and then we can vote on them, um, in bank. I would also like to, uh, remove items fourteen through twenty, uh, same thing, I have a few questions and we can vote about them in banks for our Parks Director. So if it passes, Mr. Phillips, please be ready to speak on those. And then items.
You just about said the whole consent agenda.
I did, I did, um, and, and, uh, there, there are, this consent agenda has twenty-two contracts on it, and I would rather not approve twenty-two contracts without ha- having some discussion on them. And so lastly, I would like to remove, um, items, twen- item number twenty-two, I also have a question for that and we can vote on it.
But you wanna, you wanna remove the whole consent agenda?
Except for item twenty-one, I think we're, I mean, I, I think.
Twenty-one, okay?
Except for item twenty-one, yes.
And item seven?
And item seven?
And, and item seven is fine, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's your motion?
So the motion is to remove items number eight through twenty.
I want to be clear, I want to remove eight through fourteen, when we can vote on them together. I just, because they're all related, so I have some questions and then we can vote together. Items, um, fifteen through, I'm sorry, eight through twelve together, items, eight, I'm sorry, eight through, eight through thirteen together, fourteen through twenty together, and then twenty-two separately.
I'm entertaining a second.
Um, and it, Mr. Mayor, is there a discussion? Can, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Yes, you can, well, let me get it, let me see if I get a second, is there a second on this? Second, second. Okay, we're in discussion right now, Mr. Gilliard.
Okay, the question I want to ask is, and, and, and I think I'm probably am gonna answer my own question. None of these have ever come before council before, have they?
Mr. Manager? Mr. Manager?
A mem- so memorandums on these documents and what they entail have been provided to council prior to notifying you that we were submitting them on the agenda, what they were for, for, et cetera, et cetera. But they have not come before you since last year when they were put on the agenda. Uh, this is the renewal from the contracts from last year.
And let me, and my, my, my final question is this. So did any of the terms change with the renewal?
No, I don't believe so, I'll, I'll, uh, or nothing, uh, to use, I know the, uh, the city attorney uses the word substantive, so no substantive changes with the exception of, you know, you change the dates and all of that good stuff. But Mr. Phillips is, uh, online as the subject matter expert who can chime in, chime in to give any additional, uh, information, uh, on that.
And, and all of, all of these are eighty-twenty contracts, correct?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Gilliard, Mayor and Council, this is Tony Phillips, Director of Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Uh, pursuant to the comments the city managers made, there are no substantive agreement, changes to the agreements. They are formatted in the same way as they were the previous year, as approved by the city attorney and as approved by council in twenty nineteen. You mentioned specifically the percentage of agreement. And so these agreements that are on percentage basis are at a seventy-thirty split with one exception. That is the South Fulton Center, which is at a sixty-forty revenue split. And that is where they are all currently positioned.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so, uh, my, my question, just so people understand what they are, since we're, we're doing that now, um, were for these contracts for these youth athletic associations. We've had very contentious, um, relationships with some of our youth athletic associations. I'm not cleared where we are in our parks master planning. And I'm also, I also never saw a result. I don't remember a result of the audit, the independent audit that was done of the youth athletic, athletic associations. So bef- before we lock ourselves into another year-long agreement, I want some conversation to make sure that next year won't be anything like last year. And secondly, um, because next year is in a coronavirus pandemic and we are facing, um, fourteen percent across-the-board cuts, uh, for contracts fourteen through, through twenty, um, if we're gonna be facing like all of these across-the-board cuts, it would seem that there should be some changes made. And if there are no changes made, I'm just not sure how that lines up with our twenty-twenty-one budget for which we still have not set, um, any public hearings or retreat to discuss. And then lastly, before we approve twenty thousand dollars for a new GDOT project, I would like to, uh, get clarity on, um, finishing the sidewalks on Old National, because we've been working on those for a decade or two.
So I think there were a lot of, there were a lot of comments, and I'll just, I'll just try to respond to all of them as succinctly as possible. Um, in regards to parks, I think what we're trying to do is, um, keep some flexibility there. Entering into these agreements will allow us to lock in the ability to provide the service to our residents at minimum out-of-pocket cost to the city, where we simply would get a revenue split and we would pass on, um, some of the burden on to the athletics association who would manage on our behalf. That way, we basically, uh, freeze or limit the, the fiscal impact on the city. And that is the most prudent approach that we've been able to identify in the great unknown for the pandemic. Um, in relation to the sidewalks, I actually forwarded, um, the council an email after your initial inquiry. And so, um, it's not, it wouldn't be a, a fully correct statement to say that those funds were taken away. What occurred is that, um, GDOT does not offer the T E A program in the same manner. They're changing the name and the funding source. And so will be provided information on what the new name and funding source for that statewide program. But all, they made a commitment that those existing programs will be funded. And so we're awaiting, um, that award and the details and all of that good stuff is in the correspondence that I provided you. I think the second piece, um, is you were referring to a new program. Um, the twenty percent is, um, is the one that was referenced by Mr. McDowell in the work session. So it's not a new, um, allocation of funding. It actually would be a reduced allocation of what was earmarked in the budget. I will say that per his presentation, we're earmarking it in this budget, um, and reducing that cost. But we would have to basically roll that reduced cost into a future budget because that project would not be let until FY twenty-one.
And Mr. Donald, everybody, this is, uh, an approval, this is not a discussion. If in fact it is approved, then we go on the rest agenda where we have plenty of discussion. I will, however, let Ms. Gumm speak. Do you understand it, Ms. Gumm?
Yes, so I'll wait till we have discussion.
Okay, so we got, Madam Clerk, we have, we have a motion and a second, is that not correct?
Yes.
Yes, there's a motion and a second.
All right, let's go, please.
Uh, since everybody's not in the queue, uh, Councilmember Rowell? Councilmember Rowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gumm?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliard?
Yes.
Reeves?
Aye.
Khalid?
Yes, Mr. Khalid?
Baker?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes to amend the, the adoption of the agenda. Next item is council, of council work session and regular meeting minutes for April twenty-eighth.
I'll entertain a motion.
Councilmember Khalid, you're muted.
Just to be clear, did we approve the agenda as amended, that what we just did?
Yes, sir.
I, I make a motion to approve the April twenty-eighth, uh, council work session and regular meeting minutes.
Second, second.
Properly moved and second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Khalid?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Gilliard?
Aye.
Willis? Councilmember Willis?
Aye.
Gumm?
Aye.
Rowell?
Aye.
Motion approved. The next one is that approval of the special call meeting minutes in May fourteen, twenty-four, twenty-twenty.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the special call meeting minutes for May fourth, excuse me, May fourteen, two thousand and twenty. Second.
Properly moved and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Councilmember Rowell?
Aye.
Gumm?
Aye.
Willis? Councilmember Willis?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliard?
Yes.
Reeves?
Aye.
Khalid? Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid?
Yeah, I abstain.
Motion passes. Next, we have public comments. Speakers will be granted a total of two minutes each, and public comments will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves and their addresses prior to speaking, and I have twelve public comment forms. You ready, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
The first one is from Jose Wright. He lives at forty-two twenty-four Caveat Court, District Four. It has come to my attention that the city council will discuss and take a vote on whether to keep the City of South Fulton Finance Committee. While it's just being started, I am very alarmed that this is coming up for discussion and a vote. The Finance Committee has representation from both the council and citizens. It provides a wonderful check and balance on the city's spending. To terminate it leaves an error that there is something to hide. I thought our city was founded on the principles of transparency, accountability, and good governance. I often hear that our mayor and city council member say that they want to hear from the voters. Well, this voter wants the Finance Committee to stay in place and let it get on with its important work. I request you to vote no to terminate the Finance Committee. Five regards. Jose Wright. Comment number two is from Ronnie Few, District Two. I support maintaining a finance committee made up of eight citizens and three council members. This committee's oversight will assist with ensuring that the City of South Fulton provides reliable financial information to the citizens and stakeholders and confirms with internal financial processes and procedures. Also, I recommend that as part of the, of the internal control oversight, the city performs a risk assessment of its internal processes. It always, it's always a positive when citizens and government work together. Comment number three, Joel Johnson, District One. I have had an opportunity to listen Finance Committee, and I was very impressed with the information I received. I feel that this committee should remain as formed, especially since the majority of the committee are citizens. Comment number four, from Jean Washington, District Four. Please continue with the independent Finance Committee. We need impartial reporting along with visibility and transparency that this committee provides. Comment number five, from Art Andrews. Uh, he doesn't give an address on what district he's in. Today makes three weeks I was tested for COVID-nineteen at Wolf Creek. As of today, I have received no results. I have called numerous times and told my definition to be passed to the nurse. And someone would tell me, I am sixty-six years old, but only have no smell, tastes, symptoms, but my doctor says I still need results. There are problems in this town. Comment number six, Brenda Metta. Uh, her address is twenty-nine seventy Keenwood Road. Uh, she doesn't list her district. The current Finance Committee should remain the same to ensure the South Fulton community receives accurate and objective information about this issue and how they are acting. Comment number seven, Jesse Price. Five fifty-four eleven West Port Circle. I would like to present, I would like the present Finance Systems Day. The residents of South Fulton need to have knowledge of how funds are being spent. Comment number eight, Rosalind Wilford, District Number One. I am not in favor of disbanding the Finance Committee with the changes that have passed through recently, such as the child maintenance controls that have been put in place are being oversight. Citizen involvement are are being compromised. Giving too much power to few people leave the current Finance Committee structure as it is. Public comment number nine, Gwen Folson, District Five. Please keep the Finance Committee as it is due to, do please keep the Finance Committee as it is due the South Fulton community can have objective knowledge about its money and how it's being spent. Comment number ten, from Glenda. That's all she says, uh, is Glenda, and she's from District Five. As you council folks who ran for office, hopefully you remember the taxpayers voted you in office. If you vote to remove the Finance Committee in favor of the mayor and the city manager, at some point, they will not hold these office and others will, and you as a citizen as well. Please do not vote to remove the Finance Committee because controls are needed in all businesses and situations. Comment number eleven, Juliet Rankins, District Four. I support the continuation of the Finance Committee. Comment number twelve, Barbara Lewis, District Seven. We have many renters in our subdivision, the Seda West, and I would like to know, are you collecting fines from the owners who do not have garbage collection services? Along West Row, Row, close to the corner of the Seda and West, and other spots have become a garbage disposal area for people to expose of their garbage bags and U-Haul boxes full of trash, mattresses, tree branches, et cetera. The city cleans it up and it repeats a day later. What can we do about this? Will taxes ever be deducted from the homeowner taxes, which could help solve the problem? That ends our public comments, and they were all sent to Mayor and Council earlier this morning.
Okay, next item, ma'am, uh, uh, pardon me, just give us the next item, please.
Next item will be the Chief Financial Officer's monthly report. Mr. Malazi.
Thank you. I'm loading the report.
Mr. Malazi, are you ready?
Yes, I'm uploading the report so I can share with you.
What happened?
He's uploading the report.
Oh, okay.
Can you see it?
You all see the report?
We have a blank screen. Would you like for us to do it?
Yes, if you would. Go, please.
All right, you need to, uh, close your share screen.
Okay, just a minute.
Corey, you got it?
Uh, that's a different one. Okay.
You ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll bring up the second page. That's what I was trying to avoid. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and the City Council. Uh, this is the, our financial report as of end of April twenty twenty. Uh, at the end of April, we happen to have more than expenses of twenty-eight point one million dollars that we received, more revenue than expenses. And at the end of April, we managed to get our revenue out of our seventy-five million budgeted revenue. So far, we had received fifty-six point eight million dollars. And the revenue expenses so far were at twenty-eight point eight million dollars in our general fund. As of thirtieth of April, our total general fund, our revenues, we have received seventy-five percent. Remaining twenty-five percent, which we are almost, as you all know, with what is happening, uh, we are not able to focus that we are going to receive that twenty-five, not even half of that. And we are so lucky that most of our revenues we received at the beginning of the fiscal year because they are in taxes. So we received the most of our revenues in the October, November, December, then we have received our business license. In April, we have also received our utility tax from companies in March. But other than that, as we go forward, it's a struggle to find the, out how we are going to do. And as you heard from the auditor, uh, that we are privileged to have started the year very well with the cash. Without that cash, we didn't have been talking about this C fifteen percent reduction. Would have been talking even worse than that, as you may hear from different cities, some they are going up to thirty-five percent reduction. So with that shortfall of revenues, uh, for us to make it into our thirtieth of September, we are proposing, and the city manager will also be going through during his report, we are recommending to have fifteen percent across-the-board cut, revenue cut. As you know, that the revenues shortfall is the automaticary reduction of expenses. You can't talk of expenditures if there are no revenues. If you go to the next slide, next slide will tell you where we have done well and where we are still lagging behind. You'll find out that we budgeted property tax, C thirty-one. They have been coming, and we still, we have received about twenty-five million dollars. So there you can see about sixteen, six million still is the outstanding there. We may get some, but not much, uh, with what is happening. As you know, most people have lost jobs. So it will be very hard to get money to pay their mortgage. And then we have motor vehicle budgeted at three hundred thousand. Those are some of the outliers that we have instead corrected so far, five hundred and fourteen, way above what we budgeted for. Then we have franchise fees. We budgeted the two point four million dollars. We have corrected the three point one million dollars. And the most of these ones are collected before March, March, end of March. Um, then we have local, uh, local option sales tax. We budgeted for twenty-five million dollars. We have corrected only half of it. Uh, you may know that the, we receive a sales tax one month be, behind. So this is as of April. So when we, the one that we receive in April, that means are for March. So even though it's reported in April, but it is, it's for March. We are one month behind. So the one that will correct in the October, it will be actually for September. So just take note of that, that you are one month behind of sales tax. Then we have got business option.
Excuse me, excuse me, someone needs to move themselves. We're hearing background now. Go ahead.
We have, uh, business license, which is the business and occupational. We budgeted for two million dollars. The year I want you to read, to really understand and listen what is going to happen to us. We budgeted for two million dollars. We have corrected one point four million dollars. And all of these business licenses, they pay only receipt they corrected the previous year. So what we have received now, end of March, April, is the renewal of revenues they corrected last year. So we may not be fully affected. The only people that will affect us here, they will be the people that we are to pay late, even the due date of March the first. Beyond that, they are the one that will be correcting. So we will not have a little effect in here, but our biggest effect will be next year. Because when they are renewing their business license next year, they will be renewing about the receipts that they have received in twenty twenty, where there's this impact of business closures. So our revenues is not only here for us, we are looking beyond twenty twenty-one. That one I really want you to take, to bear in mind when we are talking about the expenditure reduction. Then we have other taxes. These are different taxes that, so far, we budgeted for seven million, seven point two. We have already gone seven point five million dollars. This also includes the, premium tax that we budgeted for five million dollars. As you remember, we've got seven million dollars. So most of those ones are in that area of other taxes. Then we have building permit, which is doing extremely, extremely well. Uh, we budgeted for one point eight million dollars. We have already gone beyond that, and it's still doing a good job that even there was the imposition in the community, the greater affairs, that was part of an essential because of the addition of tasks. There, we had to decide to include personnel because there's a lot that is coming in the building permit because of the additional or increase in constructions. Then we have I G A. I G A, we budgeted for four point three million dollars. And the, we are lagging behind because we had two I G As. We have uh, and out of the two, I'll mention only one, that is the, uh, Fire, where we provide services to foot-on industrial. That one is going very well smoothly. And the, we are getting every month three hundred and eight thousand dollars. I'll leave the other one. Uh, maybe we'll disclose to you what is happening. Actually, we are uh, overviewing our agreement with the, the second I G A. So we will keep you posted on that one. So that's where we have not been receiving some of our uh, revenues. So far, we have only received once. We have not received the other one, but we'll keep you posted on that one. Management is on top of that.
Yes, that's a, that's a, um, topic that we have on the list for a closed session.
Uh, then we have municipal court. As the, all of you, you know that municipal court is closed. And the, so we can't expect any revenues from municipal court until we bring back the services. And then we have the other revenues. Other revenues are different revenues. You know, uh, we get revenues from police that do fingerprinting, and if services are closed, we don't get. And then we have charges for fees. Uh, we budgeted for seven hundred and twelve uh, thousand dollars. So far, we get three point seven six. And that one includes parks and recreation. As you know, it's closed, so we can't get fees. Those sharing fees are in this area. And when we get into expenses, some of the expenses are those ones that you may see them. At the end of it, if you look at the bottom of it, we have, we budgeted for seventy-five million dollars on the left side. And so far, we have spent twenty-eight million dollars. And we have more than what we, uh, have received uh, and over, uh, and, uh, above, beyond twenty-eight point, uh, one million dollars. So you may say we have more revenue than expenses until you see where we'll be going because the revenues we receive at the beginning of the fiscal year, while expenses are spread out throughout the year. We'll get that one in details as we go slide by slide. If we may move to the next slide, please. Taxes are our main sources of revenues. I think it was already mentioned by the auditor. Even though there are some expense, uh, revenues that have exceeded, which have already gone through, there are some revenues that are the, uh, are below what we projected for, as I went this, um, line by line. Other revenues that have gone beyond estimated but include building permits. Again, all of these ones, I went the, um, line by line. So if we may go to the next slide. And some of these ones will be a repetition so that you understand exactly what, where we are. Property tax revenues. In the, the month of April, we corrected six hundred and five thousand dollars compared to what we corrected in the month of April, uh, in March. March, we corrected one point seven million dollars. So you can see the change from one point seven to six thousand dollars. March, we corrected one point seven million dollars. So you can see the change from one point seven to six thousand dollars. And remember, our tax, property taxes, forty five percent of our total revenues. Lost revenues, which is sales tax, is twenty three percent of our total revenues. So far, in the uh April, we received one point seven million dollars. That is way down by over two hundred thousand because in the. Uh, March, we received one point seven million dollars. And in February, we received two point two million dollars. So you can see the trend is going down. And in May, we may be even uh privileged or we may be even lucky to get more than one point five million dollars. So it's going down. And sales taxes budgeted at twenty five million dollars, we have received the half of that twelve point. Uh, has been corrected so far by end of April. Other taxes that include the premiums. Is thirteen percent of our total budget. Again, the entire budgeted revenue so far by end of April, we have received seventy five percent. And we are struggling and will be struggling to get the remaining twenty five percent, which is almost impossible. Next slide, please. So this is a summary of revenue of how much monthly budgeted, how much we expect. Uh, and uh, by month. So for instance, property tax, we budgeted for two point six monthly receipts and in April we received six hundred thousand. That's a shortfall of over two million dollars that we're expecting to save. At the end of it, we have received the twenty five million dollars, which is forty five percent of the total revenues. Then the other one I'll talk about will be the sales tax. Sales tax, we averagely. We are expected to receive two million dollars. We have gone even up to two point four million dollars. But as you will see, in April, we have received one point seven million dollars. So that's a shortfall of three hundred thousand. Budgeted at twenty five, we have received the twelve point nine million dollars. And at the bottom of it, on the second uh column from right. You'll see our total revenue is fifty six million dollars. If you may go to the next slide. Uh, this is a chart in a chat form of giving us the biggest revenues that we have is the property tax. Thirty one, we have received twenty five. The next one is the sales tax. Twenty five, we have received the twelve point nine. And business occupation, we budgeted for two million dollars. We so far, we got one point four million dollars. We still have got more than six hundred thousand to go. Next slide. So here mainly the focus should be on the first, uh, first line, that's general fund. Budgeted at seventy five million dollars. You'll see we have received uh three million dollars. In the April. But if we go to expenses, take note of that, you find out that we are spending over six million dollars. So we are receiving less, less and less, and we continue spending more and more. Which cannot be sustained if we cannot uh contain the expenses that we have, that are supported by revenues. Next slide. As end of April twenty twenty, average expenditures were at thirty eight percent. Which is twenty eight point seven million dollars of twenty twenty amended budget. So when I'm talking about amended budget. I'm talking about the last amendment we did, which was the uh fourth amendment. I'm not talking about the upcoming mid-year budget amendment. So we have the adopted budget that we adopted last year. Then we have been having several amendments. So this seventy five million dollars we are talking about is out of the amended budget. So you don't mix up the two. The amended we are talking now and the upcoming a mid-year budget amendment. That will include the fifteen percent uh cut. Expenditure cut of fifteen percent across the board has been recommended. In order to make up for the deep revenue shortfall due to closure of city services as a result of COVID nineteen pandemic outbreak. The city will be able, if we implemented that, the city will be able to meet payroll and benefit expenditures. For all employees, meet all general obligations, debt and other monthly bills payment. Till end of fiscal year after implementing expenditure reduction through twenty twenty budget amendment. Effects of revenue shortfall will continue beyond twenty twenty one fiscal year, as I mentioned earlier on. Twenty twenty one budget will have its foundation on the twenty twenty amended budget. That will include fifteen percent expenditure. You have this message repeatedly. The city manager will catch it and the upcoming budget amendment end of this week will be talking about this. If we go to the next slide. This is a summary of our expenses. And as you see, uh, at the beginning, first column on the left. You'll see our monthly expenditures is six point eight million dollars. And on the other side, you saw three point seven million dollars that we received. And uh, towards the end of the column on the right side. You'll see that our expenses are only thirty eight percent. So you wonder, we are at thirty eight percent. That means we are under spending. Unless we know how our expenses are, which we are going to talk uh ahead of us. If we may go to the next slide. Again, this is just to tell us where the most of our expenses are. The majority of our expenditures are in personnel. Forty four million dollars of our budgeted or amended seventy five million dollars. Uh, go to personnel. And out of that, forty four million dollars, we have already spent almost half of that. That's eight twenty two, eighteen point two million dollars. And the next expenditure will be on operations. Out of thirty one million dollars, we have spent ten million dollars, ten point five million dollars. If we may go to the next slide. Uh, it's the same, but just in a chat form. Personnel is the blue one. Then you have contracted services. Then you have supplies in gray. We may go to the next. Uh, this is the, the summary of expenditures in April three point one. And the um expenditure twenty eight, the first one, that's in general fund. On your column to the left, uh, to the right, is twenty eight point seven nine five. General fund for the uh, from October up now. If we may go to the next one. Summary of revenues. It may be a repetition, but here it will be in details. There is an estimated revenue shortfall of eleven point four million dollars, as we have said, the past two. Uh, reports that have gone, that we have that shortfall. Out of our seventy five point nine million dollars. And this is as a result of uh COVID nineteen pandemic outbreak resulting in closure of our facilities. The economic downspire will persist for months to come beyond the lifting of current lockdown. It's beyond twenty twenty one. It will go way beyond that. Revenue shortfall being experienced by city of South Footon is applicable to all neighboring municipalities. In the metro area, across the state and around the country. Although the magnitude of shortfall varies from city to city. So we may be talking about the fifteen percent across the board cut. There may be some that will be talking about ten percent. There may be some that will be talking about seven percent. There are some that are talking about nineteen, twenty one, even thirty five percent shortfall. So it depends on how financially you were or what type of sources of revenue. When do you receive those revenues? When your fiscal year ends? Those, all those things are applicable to that. You may understand that us, we are lucky in a way that our fiscal year starts in October. Which is at the same time we have revenues. But the majority of municipalities, their fiscal year starts in July. And they end in June. So you see next month, majority of municipalities will be closing. And they'll be closing their fiscal year in this state. So, and that one will have negative impact on their fund balance. So there are several factors that get into that and determining of what's the shortfall. If we didn't have any soft landing of twenty twenty, from twenty nineteen. Uh, we would have been talking about uh across the board cut, not less than twenty five percent. But we were pleased that you have that. I think the city manager will also be going through that. Uh, we started fiscal year twenty twenty with good cash from twenty nineteen. And we expect to experience a big reduction of property tax revenues in twenty twenty one. As a result of property losing values as well as inability for taxpayers to make payments. So we will directly be affected through property tax, through um. Sales tax, through hotel motel, all taxes will be affected in twenty twenty one fiscal year budget. If we may go to the next slide. Still a continuation of summary of uh revenues. Sales tax, we have already talked. Business license, we have talked, but you can read in details. Hotel motel, I've just mentioned. Uh, it started much, much earlier than we expected. Actually, hotel motel started early of uh March. That means people stopped visiting hotels or traveling, buying way towards mid, end of February. Uh, last point is no revenue from municipal courts. We have already discussed about those ones again up there. But here I'm just recapping them. If we may go to the next slide. Projected expenditures are of no good if they cannot be supported by projected revenues. Revenues shortfall is automatically call for reduction in expenditures. In order to keep up our balanced budget. In order for us to have a balanced budget, we have to have revenues equals expenses. A fifteen percent expenditure cut across the board is recommended for twenty twenty budget. In order to be in line with revenue shortfall. The cut will include the following: that's removal of all travel and the training. Some contracts that have already been identified. Management is still going through some of the contracts we may add to these ones. And few non-essential positions, which we froze them luckily enough. And the operations expenditure. If we remove across the board, that means we look in each and every area. So if in your department, you already have frozen positions, you can't say you are going to save money from benefits. Because they are already covered in there. So the only area where you can say you save some money. If you have positions that you may delay or you may defer them. Which so far, at this time, I know there are only two departments that have been, uh, that are able to hire. And that's a P D and the fire. So any department, there is no saving that you can have from personnel because it's already covered. Personnel, that means the salaries as well as the benefits. But fire and police, if they want to save things, their card would go to wherever they may have, including personnel. If they may defer some of those ones. Reduction of twenty twenty budget enables the city not to lay off any of our current employees. Put aside enough money for grant local march for the remaining of fiscal year. Find some new initiatives that I think you saw them, the city manager provided to council, that those initiatives. They may not be delayed. So we may have to find some money somewhere else. And above all, we may need to have soft landing. In other words, we need to have more money. So that when we finish a year, we still have got something. Our tax corrections start in October, but as you saw a year or two years ago, it happened that the tax didn't go out on time. So there was no tax correction in the October. We had to go up to December, January. We don't want to have that, and there may be several things. It's not October one that you have tax corrections still. It's maybe mid uh October. When the tax revenue start coming in. So we don't want to start a fiscal year, that's October one, twenty twenty one, without anything. We want to have enough that can roll over in twenty twenty one as a starting point for our new fiscal year. Uh, this may not be a good news to some departments, but we have no choice in times like these ones. Where we do not have enough revenues to support our projected expenditures. Thank you for doing your part in making our city remain fiscal responsible. And still be able to provide services to the residents. I'm looking forward to the last slide. And in this slide, I'll have questions, comments, and the city manager. And he is available to chip in because we have been working tirelessly. On these suggestions and looking into how we can do it, how can we still be a fraud in times like this?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malazi. First person is Mr. Kalid, then Miss Willis.
Uh, okay. Um. Couple of questions. One, uh, it's sad and I just wanna, I just wanna confirm uh that I heard what you said. What I think you said, Mr. Malazi, the closing out um our fiscal year in October is, is helpful in terms of our, our balance sheet. Is that correct?
That's very true. We closed very well last year, twenty nineteen, in a way that we had enough cash. That we started with. So plus what we received, we had enough. So we may be one of the few lucky cities that uh we are where we are here. Because we started well and we collected and we have been fiscal responsible, several things. We froze at the beginning of the year, uh, we had the freeze on hiring new positions.
Awesome. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but I, I, I do have a couple of questions. Our time is limited.
Please proceed.
It, it, uh, the, but, but that's good. Uh, I, we haven't talked about. And I don't know wh- when that's going to happen, um, this direct play that we may or may not make for C D B G funds. But I just also wanted to remind everyone that the federal government's fiscal year also starts um on October one. Uh, I did make some comments in our work session about how um the U R, the U R A repayment plan. Comports or does not comport with our anticipated uh reduction in revenues from the homestead exemption tax cap. And I wonder, is this a, is this a concern for you? Do you see this as a concern? And have you been included in discussions about um the TAD project sites and the TAD redevelopment plan? As they relate to these anticipated reductions in revenue for F Y twenty twenty one?
No, I have not been included and hopefully I think I've seen several things in there where they have talked about. I think eventually they will include me. And because we talked about the tax digest, tax twenty twenty tax digest has not yet come. And uh, TAD again will have to see, I have not yet seen, but I think it looks like we already have. Identified areas of where TAD districts will be. What we need to do to take into account is where will they be? Will they be in commercial areas? Will they be in residential? Because if they're all of them, they will be in residential, you may be overburdening residents. And if there is any, all of them that are in commercial, you don't have to have too much. Because uh you'll be overburdening their businesses. And that may not be attractive to businesses that wants to allocate to us. So we have, we work together and see and give all the advices that we have.
Okay, uh, two more quick questions. One is the, um, we talked a little bit and this may be a question more for uh Mr. Donald. Um, the, the. Police and fire, we talked about, we talked about that and, and those personnel expenses. They're the only ones hiring. But right now, the county facility at Merck Miles is closed. I'm not sure when it's anticipated to even be open. I don't know how you would train. new officers in this, this environment. Do we anticipate actually filling all the positions that we were um, planning for in twenty twenty one, or might there be some cost savings there?
So we've had some cost savings initially, uh, which we've reported on in the past, but we've actually added a few innovative ways to provide both virtual and uh, real-time training to our officers. Um, and specifically in fires, actually being duplicated by some of our other South Fulton cities um, in the absence of that facility. And so we do expect all of them to be filled and, as you know, for anyone negatively impacted by the coronavirus, a large group of people have to go out of service. And so we are hoping that we can accelerate bringing these new trainees on board so that as we are inevitably impacted, taking folks out of service does not negatively impact service delivery. So the short answer is yes, we're continuing training. We've just made some adjustments and remain the regional leader as we have been. And secondly, bringing all of those on um, has been budgeted for, and we expect to do so so that we can keep our service levels the same.
Okay, and um, lastly, Mr. Malazi, could you go back to slide number twelve? This is my final question.
Um, Mr. Adams, would you help me to slide number twelve?
Thank you. This uh, uh, that's, you went too far away. My, my que- what, yes, right there. Um, my question is, like, this was just alarming, this sixty-three percent of our general fund expenditures on personnel. Is that, is that common for cities to, to spend that much on personnel uh, versus providing city services to residents?
So it's a, remember, the auditors there, they stated that the biggest allocation goes to public safety. So when you talk about personnel, three quarters, more than three quarters of that personnel is in public safety. So yes, everywhere you go, any organization, unless they are consulting, any organization, the biggest the resources, the biggest investment is in personnel.
Right.
So this is true everywhere. You see, the human resource is the biggest investment you have. And more than three quarters here, Mr. Henderson is there, the city manager is there, they will tell you the majority of that is in personnel, that's public safety.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note that we are paying our public safety folks at higher rates than others in the region, but our retention is also some of the highest. And so that kind of offsets, you gotta put it all in the context. While, while those numbers are a large portion, our retention um, rates being so high also saves us money in the long run. I think also it's been the direction of the council that in lieu of uh, adding contracts which have the fixed cost, our services are preferred to be delivered through personnel. And so we've adhered to that and our mix aligns with most in the region. And so I, I think it is a fair mix of both contract and personnel services.
And Mr. Donald, if I may say it, you're right. Now, I look at personnel. Without personnel, we have no service delivery.
No, you can't.
Yeah, so that's the way I look at it. And I, I think Mr. Donald just said that also, but you got to have personnel to deliver the services. Go ahead, Ms.
Yeah, those, those, those are my questions. Thank you.
And the facility is expected to open at the second week of June. I think you asked about the training facility as well.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Willis.
Thank you um, for recognizing me. Um. Uh, ooh, can you go back to uh, the projection and actual, and while you're getting there? I wanna ask this question, the slide. Um, Mr. Malazi, isn't it true there's a difference between operating budget and capital budget?
Yes, operating budget is different from capital budget, that's true.
And so isn't it true that you probably have not been involved in the discussions around U R A, around T A S because most of the expenditures and revenues around those budgets are, are in capital budget items, correct?
Mr. Adams, can you go to um, number ten, number ten?
That was a question.
So.
Now, Mr. Donald, Mr. Malazi.
So the answer is, yes, what we did, what you council decided was, let's separate general operations and let's remove all capital projects from here. So yes, all capital projects are funded under U R A.
And I, and I understand that, and that's why uh, we did that. And I'm not saying we did anything wrong. We did what we should have done.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, uh, separate capital budget from um, operating budget. So I just wanted to clarify, you know, make that as a clarification point because it was brought up that the, we should look at the U R A, the T A S and redevelopment funds. Those are, that's a separate budget in itself.
I, I think they understood him. He was talking about even though we have U R A, but we still have got to pay the debt comes from general fund. So we move money from general fund to pay the debt of U R A.
Okay, but the funding that is in the U R A, are those mostly capital budget projects?
All of them, all of them are capital.
Okay, and you have not given us any reporting that we're in jeopardy of not meeting our debt obligation for the U R A payment. So are we good?
So you, you are a payment, we pay twice a month, a year, we have paid in February and we're going to pay in August and it's already put aside, it's already budgeted before.
Okay, okay.
U R A details will be coming through the city manager and the public works, say, director, thinking we talked in the past, but yeah, it will be coming up for you.
Okay, now I, I do wanna bring up one thing. Now, can you go back to the slide where you talked about collecting taxes, collecting revenues? What you actually, what you projected and what you actually collected? Because the slide that showed that we may have a two million shortfall in property taxes. Uh, can you go back to that slide? That's where I'm a little confused.
Go to slide three, three, three.
Well, I'm a little confused in that area. The reason I'm confused in that area is because COVID nineteen has not always been around. COVID nineteen came into play, let's say, March, okay? And so uh, watch of twenty twenty. Most of our property taxes for this fiscal budget should have been already collected. And so I guess I'm trying to figure out, was there some type of issue with how you projected us collecting property tax? You not being individually, I'm saying as a whole, was there some kind of comprehensively financed? Was there, I, I don't understand why there's such a major shortfall because COVID nineteen, I don't see would have had an immediate impact on our finances or collecting. Now, maybe local option sales tax because that is, that comes in monthly. But our property taxes, that's usually collected and given to the city around January. And so most of the property taxes for fiscal nineteen would have already been collected. Also, business license, licensing. So I'm not understanding why we have such a major shortfall of over two million dollars. And then if you start looking at twenty twenty, I still don't see how we would, as far as property taxes, where there would be a lot of instability, we have major, unless we have, unless we have major, um, you know, property taxes, I mean, property value fall. I just don't see, because even if with foreclosures, the banks are still gonna make the payments on a mortgage. So I do see where we need to be conservative around local auction sales tax. I am just confused on why we have such a shortfall around property taxes. And if, um, if you go back to the slide where you talked about projecting actually uh, how much property taxes we have collected thus far, and you showed a two million, it wasn't this slide.
Um, which, that's the slide, that shows where we have corrected, how much.
No, but there was a slide where you show projected, and then you show what we actually came in and then you had a variance. Keep going.
Okay, so go to.
That one, that one.
It, um.
So I'm looking at right here.
What?
Hold on, let me, property taxes, property taxes.
Mm-hmm.
Are you monthly budgeted?
Mm-hmm.
Million. And April twenty twenty, you're saying you collected six hundred five thousand and a variance of two million.
Yes. But remember, in the previous month, we just corrected one point seven million dollars. So let me tell you how taxes are. The first thing is, I think you got a memo from Mr. Donald, the city manager, which was very good. That memo, he included in there several municipalities where they are having shortfalls. And the majority of them, they mentioned about taxes as well, being the source, main source of revenues in every municipalities. So here is what happened. We, when taxes are due in October, the majority of people, citizen, you, elderly people, they pay immediately, they get a bill in October, November, the majority of them. So we received maybe almost the, close to more than, almost half between the October and the December. Then January, uh, end of January, you receive the majority of the payment from the mortgage people. Mortgage people, they make sure they pay the last they can, but at the same time, they don't want to pay after January fifteenth because they will be charged interest. So that's where we received the majority of them. Then after January the fifteenth, you have, we receive on monthly. By the end, we get into September thirtieth, maybe we may have two percent or half percent or one percent still remaining. That one becomes the previous revenue in the following year. So even here, now we talk here, we have previous years revenue. So we include that one in our calculations. So it's not strange, it's not different from what other municipalities are seeing. It's us. We were to get that four, three million dollars between now and September. But depending on how it's decreasing monthly receiving, we will not be able to receive the whole of that.
Uh, and, and so Mr. Donald's uh, put in the chat box, he can help me out because I'm still confused because um, I, I just don't see how we, how we have such a significant shortfall.
Yes, I, I think some of that is more so than having a shortfall. Some of these are projections and we're mixing the conversation.
Projection here.
Yeah, we're, we're mixing the conversation about our actual and our projections. So the budget itself is a projection. But what we are seeing is that our revenue collections have slowed at a rate that's even more than we would have projected based on COVID nineteen. And so what Mr. Malazi and I have done is use my expertise and understanding the unemployment insurance system and how those project to the reductions in, across our city, which is one of the hardest hits, and try to align it with how we believe that might impact our revenues throughout the balance of F Y twenty as well as F Y twenty one. And so we are projecting, in, in short, what we're doing is we're underestimating revenues and overestimating expenses so that we give ourselves the best case. So that way, if we're, if we're overestimating our expenses and underestimating our revenues and we still come out all right, then that is a better case projection than to actually base it on last year's projections.
And, and so you brought up unemployment insurance, which is a employer tax. Um, so I don't want people to confuse that. What I am talking about is property tax. Property, yeah, property tax. What I am confused about is our property tax projection. I, I can understand us, uh, you know, uh, over, I can understand us using that form of a local option sales tax because, you know, businesses haven't, we shut businesses down, we shut the state now, people not going, people haven't been able to pay local option sales tax. But our property taxes, I just don't under- I, I am a little confused about that area, property tax and business license occupation. Because for our current tax year, because we should have, we should have collected most of our property. This is now June, May going into June, we should have collected most of our property taxes by now. So once it have this major shortfall in that area, I'm just a little confused. And maybe we need to take off, I can, we cannot.
I, I think, I think we can answer it here. It is not so much the tax portion. It's the basis of the projection. Basically, if, if the hardest hit areas are going to be um, South Fulton County, the city of South Fulton, for uh, for people being unemployed. If sales tax are being reduced at the largest numbers, if our collections in sixty percent of our areas are slow. And so we're not talking about the tax portion. We're talking about that we're projecting those greater losses based on, so across the board, we're projecting uh, much lower revenues. If that is the case, subsequently, we wanna also project that level of reduction in our expenses. So right now, we're supposed to bring in a hundred million dollars. And when you look at all of the factors, it's saying that twenty percent of that you will never realize for the balance of the year. You take your actuals and remove those and what's less for you, what's left over for you to collect, they're now backing that out. And so when they do so, that comes up with the eleven point four million dollars that you won't collect. And our largest amount that we would likely not collect from is the largest area that we receive revenues. That is your property taxes. And so if you're not, if you potentially are not going to receive those revenues, you definitely wanna focus on reducing your expenditures immediately. Did I capture that correctly?
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I guess my, yes, our largest bracket is property tax. I could see why we would have a reduction in local option sales tax. I could see why we would have a large reduction in municipal courts, that's been closed down. I could see why we would have uh, reduction in uh, parking and recreation, that's been closed down. But I can't.
I get your question.
I, I, I cannot understand why there's such a huge gap with property tax. Because up until, we should have collected most of our property tax uh, by now. And so, I mean, I, I guess I am confused.
I think I understand.
Take a deeper dive in why um, there is a huge variance in that, in that line, property tax.
I think I understand now. And so I, I would suggest it, so there are two things. I think the first thing is, these are projections. And so the projection is, these are worst case. We're trying to do worst case so that we don't, like, we don't wanna gamble with this. I think that's one in the whole context is, again, you're overestimating your, you're underestimating your revenues and you're overestimating your expenditures so that you can have the safest projection and mode of operation to ensure your success moving forward. I think that's the first thing. I think the second thing that may be helpful is uh, Mr. Malazi, if you can provide them the full details to the financial report offline, then they would be able to see some of the things that I've seen, which is a month and year-to-date comparison because the property tax shortfall, while it may, while it potentially could have been identified earlier, um, I believe that looking at those year-to-date and month-to-dates would show the decline so that they can, they can s- see it more clearly. Because I, I think it seems like you're concerned about the devil in the details. Where are we, where are we basing this on and when and why are these collections dropping?
Yeah, and it also would be helpful if we could start getting more actual to expenditure, I mean, actual to projection reports on a monthly. We've asked before to get that type of uh, reporting uh, on a monthly basis to get that sent to council. Um.
Yes, ma'am. Remember that, this is a reminder, that's more than fair, that's a more than fair request. But remember, you gave me time when, when we had.
I did.
We had some of these transitions. We've started meeting on that. Remember, we were gonna start implementing in June and then in July, you start getting those more detail reports. I just wanted to remind you of that because it is forthcoming.
Yeah, and I do understand COVID nineteen here and we had to shift our priorities as well, okay? But I just, I just, I need that information on that because I don't, that's, that's bothering me. Thank you.
Mr. Malazi.
Yes, ma'am.
What percent of the property tax dollars are driven by mortgage payment?
Uh, so the mortgage payment is the big. Uh, so the mortgage payment is the biggest actually. So we may say half of that actually may be almost fifty percent, so fifty percent of the um, forty-five percent, it will be like twenty, twenty-two point.
So are you saying that those payments to you are given, are get, you get in between October and December?
So most of the employee, most of the um, residents, especially the elder, e- e- elder ones, once they receive the bill end of September, beginning of October, they are the first people that they will pay, then it goes on, it goes on. In December, the biggest payment in December is from the mortgage people. Always, they would love to hold on to the money, but they don't want to pay, um, they don't want to pay the penalty after the fifteenth of.
And I think that's one, I think that's one of the things that Councilwoman Willis was trying to get to. Uh, because you know, when, when you have a mortgage payment, it comes from the bank every year, but you're saying mortgage until, till December.
Yeah, they hold everywhere you go, everywhere a mortgage companies, people that they are, they pass through mortgage company. Always, they drag towards the end of the, before the penalty, that's when they pay.
Okay, so we're looking for that in December.
Yes, you, yeah, you have that information, who let you know when the big bill comes to say this is.
Yeah, and I think that's what, that's what Mister Will is gonna see a lot more uh, coming in December.
Okay.
Alright, Mister, Miss Guggs.
I'm in the queue too.
Oh goodness, I'm sorry. Um, so I have um, three questions. So how will um, this whole, this shortfall and these projections impact the programs that were developed in response to COVID? So I'm speaking directly of the Gladiator benefits and then also to the business loan sustainability um, program.
Well, I can chime in and answer those, or would you, you want to take a stab at it first, Mister Malazi?
Uh, li- yeah, y- you go ahead.
So it, I'll tell you, it's gonna negatively impact most of them. I think the Gladiator benefit is a deferred compensation type benefit and that's why we chose it. Because I think Mister Malazi may have sent you guys uh, something and not to, to beat up on them. But I think the city of Augusta actually canceled their hazard pay program. Uh, once some of these new development occur. I think for us, because it's deferred compensation program and the benefit is not realized until certain benchmarks or a timeframe is uh, is hit, then we are able to maintain it. But the small business uh, program, the reason it's not, it wasn't on the work session is because with this fifteen percent cut, and this was a recommendation that I think it's come within the last week from the uh, city treasurer. You know, it, there is not money for it anymore because that money has to be moved somewhere else. So now, we have not presented the budget modification because we're still trying to keep as many of those programs in place as possible. Because if businesses stay open, then those revenues are, come back into the city. And so a program like that does have a return on investment. But, you know, if you have to choose between uh, keeping the infrastructure standing when you've got mold and, and ceilings and, and roofs crashing and things of that nature or potholes where people can't travel and move back and forth, then you've got to choose, or you choose an infrastructure or returning on investment that you may or may not seek. Our recommendation is not complete, but I will be honest with you that it is a bleak enough projection that some of those would likely, our recommendation would be to cease and desist on many of them.
Okay, um, also to, when are the departments supposed to have all of their recommendations for that fifteen percent cut to you?
So we have been, we have started receiving them. Uh, initially, we, we received all of those well in advance and I think they were included in that memorandum. I think the email and the memorandum I sent you yesterday is saying that this is, this fifteen percent is in addition to the cuts that you've already kind of seen and approved. So they are, they have submitted, I think, the first round of those. They're being vetted by the uh, assistant city manager and the finance team. I may have received them last night, I, I, I can't tell you, I, I don't know. Um, because I've been preparing for this meeting. But we will use the balance of the next two days to vet them and see if they're appropriate cuts or not.
Okay.
We're still kind of receiving them and vetting them. So I, I'd say that process is ongoing.
Okay, and on my last question, of course, you know, public works um, is one of our biggest concerns as well. And not quite sure how this will impact public works, but do you see um, any challenges with that? Because we also are still struggling with illegal dumping. I'm not sure about what's happening with, you know, our cameras and things of that nature. So um, what do you foresee with public works?
Yeah, so we are kind of moving some funds around. So the, the easiest way to say it, I, I hate to make these uh, comparisons, but I try to make it as simple as possible um, for the public as well. But it's almost like choosing, are you gonna pay this versus that? And so uh, the good thing with public works is, keep in mind, a lot of that stuff is funded by the U R A or um, we've got external grants. So I think I gave you guys some insight. I, I hope I sent the letter out, but I gave you, as soon as I left for meeting with uh, Russell and Kathy, I sent you guys information about, about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant we had got from them. Earlier, I think, you know, we had gotten a million dollar grant, et cetera, et cetera. And so as we get these new funding sources, what we're doing with public works is we're reducing the, the uh, obligation on the general fund and putting that into this pot to help keep the other operations of the city in place. And we're leveraging those funds that we're getting from outside sources to keep those projects going. And so it doesn't, is actually a positive for public works. But what we've also done is some of these reductions to manage blight, potholes, again, those other infrastructure issues. We were playing with a number of about one point five million, but when the projections came in, Mister Malazi, is it seven fifty or da, or is it a million that we've uh, that we're projecting to include? As a matter of fact, we, we're still working on it, so I don't want to commit to a number. But public works is one of the main priorities. And so their reductions would not be, let's call it straight line. They're pulled from areas where we have received additional funding and now we're reducing the obligation on the general fund. Does that make sense? So the three hundred and fifty from that G-DOT grant now means we can take three hundred and fifty out of that reg- regular budget that was obligated and try to use that in an area that's needed for the city. And then the funds that we had identified to put in in the mid-year budget can stay in that same place to manage the infrastructure issues that we have.
Okay, and my last, last question is, do you foresee um, us closing uh, the Merck Road transfer station in regards to these budget shortfalls?
So not today. Um, but it is definitely something, one of the contracts that we're looking at. But right now, that contract is actually revenue neutral, that's the way we created it when we first started. And so it is, r- right now, it appears to be one that is fine because it continues to be revenue neutral, but it is month to month. And uh, I, I would say this mid-year budget may require an additional budget based on how we respond to coronavirus. It, this coronavirus thing is very unknown. And so we're just giving you the best that we can for right now on the projections. But if it takes a humongous turn for the worse, especially since Georgia is reopening, we may have to revisit this topic.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to Mister.
Next, Mister Mayor, I'm next.
No, 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 let me do this. Mister Khalid, then we will end with Miss Gilliard.
Mister Khalid. Thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh, one, one last, one final question. You, uh, Mister Malazi talked about uh, the courts not being open. I was just wondering if we could get an update on when they might reopen and, and particularly at, at the very least, the code enforcement board and the code enforcement courts. Because people have been wilding out here on all national around code enforcement issues. Uh, but it might also just be bringing, might also be able to bring some revenue in. I don't know what the legalities are about having um, hearings being soon. But yeah, what if, what, do you have any update either of you on that?
So you'll actually get um, the formal recommendation on um, and our reopening plan for those committees. So you'll get a formal reopening plan uh, for your perusal and approval from me this week. We, all of these new uh, uh, activities have really made it difficult to complete it because we want to make sure that it's full and, and, and we get it done. But virtual court, we're actually uh, meeting over the next two days to finalize it and make those things available. As you mentioned, there are some legalities and things like that. So we are making sure that we get that taken care of. But the code enforcement boards, as well as virtual court, all of those things should be in place um, by mid-June, if not before in some instances. And you'll get a formal report written that'll be available for you, as well as posted on our COVID nineteen page this week.
Okay, thank you. Miss Gilliard.
Um, Mayor, so you will know, my novice is not working. So I'm trying to go through raising my hand during participant to get on the agenda. So that's why you hear me saying something when I see that it's not, that it's not working properly. But this is my point, the point I want.
We got it on your gen- we got it on the phone to him, he'll, he'll text me.
So, so we are, building permits is one revenue source. So we know that has slowed down.
No, 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 no.
Talked, excuse me?
No, ma'am, it is actually, so the permitting process, and I'll talk about that in the city manager's report, is increased so much, so that's what Mister Malazi was discussing, that the new permitting software and, and all of those things that we put in place a couple of months back are having such great results that we had to hire an additional person to help us uh, manage the process. And it's been one of our growing revenue sources and so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me just say this. So I got a call from a developer who wanted to know whether, and who was out of town and wanted to know whether or not they could um, put their project through um, electronically, okay? And so I said, well, I know that permitting, um, that there's a process to do it that way, but I do not know if you can go through the whole process. And I contacted the planning department, they said they had the software and it was not up and running yet. That was last week. So I'm talking about a developer who's starting from scratch, who is not coming to say, okay, it's now it's time for me to put the permit in. Because the permit part is working, but the other part, starting from scratch, was not working electronically. So I don't know how much of any of that is in the hole in terms of the actual. We talked about loss funds, but it's really key to look at this amount over here, for instance, represents what's actual. Now, we're gonna take the actual and make a projection to figure out where we're going to go. And so I clearly see uh, that distinction. And I think one of the big um, sources uh, that we haven't talked about is T-Spot. Because T-Spot is gonna seriously be funded because it's based on sales taxes. And so that's gonna have a lot to do with um, our T-Spot's projects and how we're gonna be able uh, to deal with them. So I just wanted to make that big distinction between actual and projection. And while the real estate taxes is the largest source of revenue, it's not the only one. And the others impact us just as well.
Good point.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright, then third.
Next, we have the city manager's report.
Alright, well, a lot of this stuff we've already covered.
You've already talked about, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll be brief. I think uh, one, we've already talked about, we, the projections and how we're doing it. I think um, one area to look at for us uh, is that not only are we making these cuts and, and I think this may answer a part of your inquiry, Councilmember Willis. Over at least since I've been here in these two and a half years, we've kind of much underspent our uh, projected budget. So we've had, we rolled over quite a bit of money into uh, the next fiscal year. I think the first year was six and a half uh, million dollars, last year was over ten million. And so the biggest reason that we are reducing uh, these expenditures as much as possible is that uh, we have to be prepared for FY twenty one because we do have that lagging selections until December. And so we want to make sure that we are prepared to do that. Uh, I think the other note uh, that is important in relation to the financial picture is that we've had over the last two and a half years about twelve budget modifications. But each one of those modifications is because we're receiving new revenues, new grants, new uh, franchise fees, et cetera, et cetera. This is the first time where we are actually having reductions. And so for us, it is, it is a new endeavor. And so we want to make sure that we are being as frugal and as uh, prepared as possible moving into FY twenty one. And I think that is the clear message that the fiscal report from the city treasurer was trying to identify. And so moving on from that, there are just a couple of uh, activities that I wanted to make you aware of. One of them is uh, that the fire I G A payment that Mister uh, Malazi was uh, highlighting is our I G A with the city of Atlanta, um, which has traditionally been late. Um, and it has gotten to a point where it is impacting our operations a little bit, especially with the complications of uh, the reduction from lot loaning, uh, which we now service, which means they don't pay for it. Um, that is something that I think we need to speak about in a closed session, whether it be today or at a future meeting. Uh, second, I think we sent you out some information on the state of the city address um, and what the proposal would be on how to move forward while it's not urgent because that does take play, that as proposed would take place in July. We do need some feedback on it, whether in this form or another. Uh, so that I don't have to send you a memorandum on it. I just wanted to let you know that we did receive the Firehouse Public Safety Grant that we talked about in the last meeting. Is about eighteen thousand dollars, a little bit more than that, and there's no uh, match required. And so we would utilize that to purchase two of the extractor washer and dryer systems to make sure we're able to clean uh, uniforms and things of that nature, keeping our uh, staff members safe. Uh, we are also, I think I mentioned um, virtual court, uh, implementing those things. Uh, we're finished putting the wrapping uh, touches on it this week. And so we plan to have the proposal and plan of action to you as a part of the full reopening uh, plan that I'll be bringing forth for council, perusal and hopeful approval. Uh, and so we are also looking at um, reduced fine amounts as a part of that so that we are able to kind of clear any backlogs that exist and make it much easier to operate court. And so something informal in writing is forthcoming, but wanted to let you know that that was top of mind uh, as well as the FY twenty budget amendment. And then finally, there is something that I need some more clear uh, and explicit uh, guidance from the council on, and that is the C D B G program. And so I will quickly break it down into two issues and provide you with the staff perspective and ask for guidance from the council on that. So issue number one is that we were not awarded the grant from Fulton County for current year funding um, based on, I think we, we sent some information out on that. But Fulton County is actually working with us to develop another program that could be funded with their funding. The second part of that issue is that um, Fulton County has submitted a request regarding the city's intent to participate in their C D B G program for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. And they want us to respond to them for their call of projects by June fifth. Participation in the Fulton County program prohibits the city from exercising our own entitlement status with HUD during the agreement period. And so it's important that you follow me here. Because the city has a population of more than fifty thousand, we're automatically designated as an entitlement community that is entitled to C D B G funds from HUD. Staff is currently drafting an aggressive schedule and plan to position South Fulton to receive C D B G funds in twenty twenty-one. Those, that application is expected to be released in June per our meeting with HUD. So the city would need to submit a HUD consolidated plan, which is in process, uh, an annual action plan, also in process, and a community engagement plan, all by this fall. Additional information regarding. Additional information regarding that proposed strategy is forthcoming, but we are in process in creating those items and activities. The question to be presented is, does the city, meaning the council, want to participate in Fulton County's program? And have to apply for funding in response to their call for applications? Or would you want to proceed with taking the necessary steps to receive funding from HUD directly? Which is what the staff recommendation is.
Okay, Mr. Khalid. Mr. Khalid, is there?
Yes, I'm here, sir. I'm sorry about that. I'm uh I'm on the phone. Anyway, that my my, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the 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 CDBG question. I think we should get it directly, um but I know other council people probably want to weigh in about that. My question is, when is our budget retreat scheduled for?
So it currently has not been scheduled. I I think I mentioned earlier that in the last week is when we got uh these final projections. And uh expressed the need to move uh, how do I say this? To move forward with these fifteen percent cuts. I think right now we are trying to get to the point where we can get this budget amendment finalized. To understand FY twenty and then begin the projections for FY twenty one. Uh, Mr. Malazi and I are putting together a condensed calendar um that we have not finalized, but we will this week. That gets us to June and July, and then that timeframe would be the normal time of the budget retreat. Uh, I think I've heard uh mentioned from some people about concerns about having it in person, where others would like it in person. I'll tell you for cost, at least with this fifteen um percent budget cut, which is gonna hit everything if approved by the council. We may not be able to afford to have it in person in the normal manner that we have it. And so we literally do not know that yet, but we should this week. Once finance has all of the proposed cuts, as well as the projected amendment for council to review and approve.
All right, I do, I do feel like um, you know, our our previous budget retreats have been all day affairs. And um, I don't know what an all-day Zoom meeting looks like, but I can imagine it. All day. I think that we will probably have, you know, if we do do it virtually, we we will need even more days than we would if we did it in person. And it would just be my request um that we try and make a decision about that. At this meeting or some meeting very soon, because it'll be July before we know it, and lots of people will probably be making plans. Uh, God forbid, we're we're able to uh get out of the house and, I mean, you know, June, God willing, we're able to get out of the house in June or July. Uh, people's calendars are gonna start filling up, so, yeah, I just want to put that on the radar again.
Okay, all right. Ms. Gilliard, you came in, but I'm gonna put you in front because I got you on the text message from his wife, but go right here, Gilliard.
Um, um, what was I gonna say? Oh, what are the pros and cons of going with the county versus going with the city? So my my first um position would be for us to go and get our own. Uh, what whatever, but I want to know what the pros and cons are of each so that we can make um a decision.
I think the pros with county is that we would likely have a small pot of funding made available quicker. So that we can handle some of the issues that we have. But I think um the con is it locks us in for a longer period of time. And so as a city of our size, if we go the funds directly, then not only will we be able to fund. You know, some of those small projects, and it may take a little longer, we'd have access to quite a bit more money and we would have complete autonomy. As long as we stay within the guidelines of HUD for which projects we uh we actually fund under our CDBG funding. Remember, the county would be approving, let's say it was a million dollars, they would be approving our projects. And while they would likely make the money available, they would have oversight over those projects. Or at least the the delivery and parameters, wherein if we go after our own entitlement status. We are fully in control over the projects that not only we select, but also which ones we fund, when and how. And all we have to do in that point is be in compliance with HUD.
Thank you so much because, thank you so much because um you told me what I wanted to hear. I think that we should be patient and not just go for a small pot of money. But wait and go for our own money so that A, we can be on o- over it and control of it. We know what experiences we've had, and it just seems like a better deal to me, so thank you for the pro and con.
Ms. Gilliard, Ms. Gilliard, Ms. Gilliard?
Yes.
I just want to, as being former county commissioner, uh it's best to have your own.
Yeah.
Uh, as you go through the hoops to get what is rightfully yours. You know, the uh paperwork and the conversation, it ain't worth it. And a lot of times, Gilliard, some of those things, I I don't know about this particular one, but some of those things have a service charge to them. The county keeps a service, so we have to look at that. So I I'm fair with you that we need to have our own.
Yeah, we know what that thirty-four percent service charge can be too.
Yeah, okay, Ms. Willis. Willis.
I'm trying to unmute myself, thank you for recognizing me. Um, I am for having our own. Um, one, we fought to become a city so we can be in control of our own destiny. And um, you know, putting our destiny, that's like putting our destiny in the hands of Fulton County. As it relates to CBDG grants and HUD funding. The other thing I scenario I want to paint for everyone is, if you recall a couple of months. Um, Fulton County was in the midst of trying to decide whether or not they were gonna even accept HUD funding anymore. And so you have all of these cities that were relying on Fulton County or CBDG grants and HUD funding. Down at the county, begging the county not to get rid of their HUD funding program. They were at the mercy of the county. That's what happens when you're out of control of your own destiny. So I would, I would say that we need to um, if we're projected to get it in twenty twenty one. Um, Ms. Donald, if you could go back to the county and ask them if we could participate in a program up until twenty twenty one. And because we're going after our own entitlement. Um, if not, then we just need to be patient until twenty twenty one. Um, uh, it it's, that's, that's just my take on it. I don't want us to be in a position of other cities, not saying the county may later on decide not to um. Give uh get a, get rid of their HUD entitlement, but I know this year that was on the table. And a lot of these cities in Fulton County were at their uh mercy.
Okay. Councilwoman Ral.
Yes, um, I would like to make a motion that the city is to pursue um uh its own CBD and G. CDBG entitlement status.
Second.
Second.
Probably move the second discussion. Hearing none, all goes in favor?
Aye.
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 Are we doing roll call?
Just say aye.
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 Madam Clerk, did we get majority vote?
That was four at least.
We've got five, Councilmember Ral, Dums, Willis, Gilliard, and Ree voted yes.
Okay.
I voted aye as well.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, one other thing, uh, uh, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
You talked about not getting the funding for for service delivery we've done over in the uh Lot Lomen area.
Yes, sir.
Uh, have we, you know, that kills me because that happens frequently.
No, no, they went always, so remember, when the, when Lot Lomen was a part of the city of Atlanta. Then they would be paying us to service certain areas.
I'm telling you, I I thought you were talking about the fire station agreement.
Mayor, point of order.
Can I, can I finish my conversation?
Point of order stops and you, and you supposed to recognize point of order and.
What, what, all right, tell me what your point is.
My point is, uh, Mr. Donald said that we were gonna discuss this matter regarding Lot Lomen in a closed session.
Listen to me, it's really not about Lot Lomen, I'm really talking about.
There's a vote on the table.
The fact, we did the vote.
We're in the middle of a vote.
No. Ms. Gilliard, we did the vote. We did the vote.
Did we, did we finish it?
Yeah, I just try, I'm just trying to understand when you talked about the stuff that land holder, what's he talking about? Revenue from the, from the fire station, that's all I'm on up.
Yes, sir, so it it is, I don't want to call it revenues from the fire station, it's more so that we have an IGA with them. Out of that fire station, yes, sir. The funding has has been delayed continuously and has risen to a point that I believe that it's time for us to have a conversation related to service delivery.
So Ms. Willis, that nothing to do with, I was just using.
Right.
The uh, the location, was that to do with Lot Lomen?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, uh, I I I want to break this question to you. Because um, point of order, uh, can you get the attorney to opine? Because um, one of my colleagues think I'm being disrespectful. Point of order stops everything immediately, and then you recognize the person who called for point of order. And they state what the point of order, okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dums, and we'll close out. Ms. Dums.
I was just asking if we could have a fifteen-minute recess or a ten-minute, do we do that? We've been going at it for four hours, five hours.
That's an excellent idea.
Yeah, my kid is a little restless over here.
Well, someone make a motion that we ju- we have a recess.
I make a motion for a fifteen-minute recess.
Which means we'll be back at what time, Ms. Madam Clerk?
Three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five.
All right.
Then the second.
Second.
Probably move the second, in discussion, hearing none, let's take a fifteen-minute recess.
Do we vote?
I make a motion to reconvene.
Second. Properly move the second in discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Um, I would like to add a, I would like to add a friendly amendment to the emotion that we end this regular meeting at five o'clock. Then go into an executive session lasting no more than an hour that ends at six o'clock. But Mr. Can. And all finished items be added to the, the next regular agenda.
You took the whole consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda?
Right.
Well, Mayor, we can't keep having four hundred page agenda agendas with thirty items and then color ourselves surprised when the meetings run long. Now, we've been on this, we've been on this. Gotten to the wait, Mayor, I stood up before.
Okay.
We haven't gotten to the twenty something consent agenda items. We're still on the agenda that we put together. And we've already been on the phone for five hours, which is the point at which our decorum starts slipping on these recorded and redistributed calls. So by six o'clock, we will have been on a call for eight hours. We will have put in an eight hour day on one Zoom call. And so I, I think that we probably do need to think about an endpoint and how we are going to move through the rest of this agenda.
Well, I'm gonna say this. I think some of those things we hadn't talked about a long time, like the, like the, uh, uh, finance deal. I think we need to have that, we need to have that conversation. Uh, I was a little bit concerned with who's all the consent to, 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 to the end, to the meeting. Uh, and on top of that, City Manager says that we had this information as of last, oh, a month ago. And so, uh.
Mayor, we always have a reason why we're going to get through all of these items quickly if we just, if people just make less comments, if people just do this, if people just do that. We've been, we've been counseling together now for over three years. And our meetings run six to eight hours. Like that is the average running time of our meetings. So I'm simply asking that we end this meeting at the eight hour mark.
Well, as usual, uh, is that a motion?
That, that is, that is, I, I want to be clear, I want, want to be clear, I made an amendment to the motion. Now, I'm a single man with no kids. I can order a pizza and stay on this phone till midnight with you all, but out of respect to our staff and their families and our own sanity and the way that we look on these calls, I think we should think about an.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was in the queue. For discussion. Well, I think, I think if we want to think about our staff, I think if we want to think about our sanity, when our agendas are sent out, um, last Thursday with all of these, uh, with all of these items that was removed off of this consent calendar uh, by Mr. Kamu, who's now complaining that our meeting is running too long. Um, we should have done our due diligence as policymakers who also have legislative assistance that are supposed to assist us in policy, read through our items and then send our questions prior to the meeting. And so because that was done, and now, uh, we have all these questions regarding the, uh, consent agenda items, uh, they were removed off, which prolongs the meeting. And so for us, for, for some, for, uh, end time to be added when we simply could have done our homework and our due diligence and presented questions prior to this meeting, so we wouldn't have so many. Um, I just think is, is, is ludicrous to me. So, um, yes, this meeting is long, just like if you look at other council meetings in other cities, their meetings are long. Um, we got people elected us to work, do the work, and we have to do the work. And it just so happened, we got a lot of work to do today.
Uh, Mr. Reed, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Willis, are you finished?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves.
Um, I would, uh, concur with both sentiments with my colleagues, Councilman Khalid and Councilwoman, uh, Willis. And I just think that we really should attend to the business at hand. And, uh, cause I have, we did have this, uh, since last week, uh, well, this, I, I know exactly, um, was particularly when it comes to the consent agenda. And to be fair to our staff members who have kids and uh, families, uh, particularly during this time and, and, and for our seniors who might need other attention, uh, that I do think that at some point in time, this cannot, uh, drag on on a continual basis. However, this is important to, uh, continue and handle the business in which we was elected for to handle the business of, of the city, um, for our constituents. And so I, I will, I will leave that up to, uh, but, but if we do have an end time, I would vote for end time a, at some point, uh, just to be fair to the staff, um, that, that, that is on this call as well and, and to respect to their families, especially during this time. That's all.
Uh, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Was there a motion before?
There was a motion by Councilmember Rouse, second by Councilmember Reeves to reconvene. It was, uh, uh, Councilmember Khalid offered an amendment to end the meeting at five within the exes, executive session to end at six.
The Councilwoman Rouse accept that amendment?
No, no one has accepted either way.
Okay, let's vote. Aye.
Yeah, aye.
Councilmember Row.
Yes.
Councilmember Guns.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gil yard. Councilmember Gil yard. Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid.
No.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
The motion passes to reconvene at three twenty-five.
Okay. Next item.
Next item is the city attorney's quarterly report. Ms. Walker.
Ma- Mayor, this, this item is probably about thirty to forty-five minutes with discussion, so I'll defer this to the next meeting for time constraints.
Okay.
Mayor. Can I ask the city attorney to go ahead and send us the spreadsheet of, of legislation that's in progress? Uh, send us her report in advance of the meeting. Can you go ahead and send that to us today? So that if we have any discrepancies, any questions, we can go ahead and give you that information prior to the meeting.
Yeah, I, I certainly will do that. If, if not today, I'd like to update it. I haven't included this month's activity.
Mr. Matt, you want to defer it? It's all right with that. You're gonna do that for her?
Yeah, I, I will make sure you get it at least a week in advance of the meeting.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying not defer it, Mayor. I just asked her to send us the information in advance.
Yeah, I think she understands that. She'll send it to you.
Yeah, we'll do.
When are you gonna send it? When are you gonna send it?
Um, at least a week in advance. So I'll give you at least a week to look over it and I can send it sooner, um, just depending on me incorporating all the recent activity.
Let's get the next item, please.
Next item is the approval of consent item agendas seven and twenty-one.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve consent, I, um, approve consent items seven through twenty-one.
No, seven and twenty-one.
Oh, I move that we approve consent items seven and twenty-one.
Second.
Second.
Properly move the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Councilmember Baker.
Mr. Baker.
Councilmember Khalid.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Gil yard.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Guns.
Yes.
Wow.
Yes.
Passes.
That passes. Next item, please.
Item number eight, council approval of memorandum between the city of South Fulton and Marquest Grissom Baseball Association.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve agreement between Marques Grissom and Baseball Association and City of South Fulton.
Properly move the second. Discussion.
Yes, I have discussion. Um, I, I think we can approve, uh, that I, I did ask for these to be moved. I think we can approve items eight through, uh, thirteen together. My, my only question was for, uh, Director Phillips about these are all agreements with, um, athletic and recreational programs. And we are not clear that we are going to even have any of these programs um, before the year twenty twenty-one. We won't have a vaccine before then. I, I just want to understand what that means. Are we, are we saying that these programs are definitely going forward? And I, I did want this to be a public discussion, so.
Let me, let me, let me understand what you want to do now. You want to approve what?
Uh, I want to do what I said at the beginning of the meeting. We can approve items eight through fourteen together. I was the one that asked them to be removed.
Okay.
And my question for Mr. Phillips is appro, what does approving these contracts mean for our commitment to having these programs in the next six months?
I think we have a motion, Madam Clerk. Don't we have on, on the Marques, on, on the, uh, on number seven, oh, you feel me? No, I'm sorry. It was number eight. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Councilman Khalid, in reference to your question, and I think this falls in line with the earlier comments from the city manager. These renewals are an effort to preserve the option, should we deem it necessary. Uh, we are not obligated. Each of these agreements includes options for thirty day notice should we decide because of pandemic conditions and COVID nineteen to use a different service delivery model, and that is a very serious consideration right now. As we all know, it's a fluid situation. We are formulating recommendations for the city manager's review uh, that will incorporate CDC guidelines, uh, best practices from N R P A and G R P A. We're looking at the Georgia High School Association and uh, Fulton County schools in terms of what they're doing with youth athletics. And we will formulate a recommendation to the city manager that will be shortly forthcoming. Uh, it does not commit us to the previous service delivery model. What I would tell you is that COVID has changed, COVID nineteen has changed all of our realities and youth sports is not an exemption to that. It may very well be that it is not practical, given public health considerations to move forward. We've not made that final determination. We're looking at all of the factors that go into that, how we would manage it. Is it practical? Is it feasible? Could we gain compliance before we make a recommendation to the city manager as to how to move forward? But this effort today is simply to preserve the option so that we have it as an available option should it become necessary.
Thank you. And la, and my last question for this public conversation um, has to do with the fact that one of the issues that, um, a preliminary audit revealed, I, I think that we were looking for a third party. I'm not, I'm not clear if we got the results on that audit. Um, but one of the issues that our preliminary audit revealed was around people paying for programs and equipment, maybe not getting the equipment or be, it being reimbursed. So we're approving these contracts. I would, would assume that some of these companies are going to begin soliciting for payment for these programs. And I just want to understand what will happen if these programs do not go forward. Uh, how are we? I, I would just like, I would like to give our public some, um, comfort in how they might be reimbursed if they start making payments on seasons that don't begin or begin late.
We are. Tony Phillips.
Yes, sir.
We went through hearing all that conversation about what used to happen with money and stuff. You have changed all of that and most of that stuff is computerized. Am I correct?
You are correct, Mr. Mayor. Every registration now goes through Civic Rec. We are in constant dialogue with our youth athletic association. Councilman Khalid, to your point, no association should be registering anyone outside of Civic Rec or collecting any monies before registration is opened in Civic Rec. We've been very clear about that. The guidelines of the agreements that are being renewed make that very clear as well. We have to monitor for compliance and that is our responsibility to do that. But the solution to the problem you just mentioned is we've not opened up registration for any of these programs, given our COVID nineteen considerations, and no one should be registering. We'll communicate directly with our parents and constituents through the avenues that we have to make sure that that's clear, not only to coaches, but to parents as well, that at this point, there is no program to register for. We've not opened registration for any of those. And so that's the vehicle for managing that and to preclude those types of issues from happening in the future.
But my point was, we had, we had extensive conversation about this months ago. And, uh, we have brought in Civic Rec to make sure that we do things properly. So I appreciate.
You're, you're, you're correct, Mr. Mayor. We did. And we actually brought it in Civics Rec a year ago, but what the audit found was that some of these same companies that are listed in these pro, and these, uh, and these contracts were collect, were collecting cash app payments. People were cash apping, folks. And they, they are appearing again on this list. But if folks want to include this, I'm, I'm ready to, that was, my questions have been answered.
Okay, then. Make a motion, please. I'll accept, okay. I will, uh, accept the motion on this.
I think we're in discussion. I think a motion.
Mayor, I was in, I was in the queue for discussion.
Uh, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Who made the, who made the motion to approve?
Mayor, I was in the queue.
Let me make clarification, Ms. Willis.
There was no ma, there was no motion made yet.
I didn't think so.
There was a motion made. I made the motion.
To do what?
To approve the Marques Grissom contract.
He did.
He's exactly right. And he came back and wanted to do eight through fourteen. Okay, you're right, Ms. Willis. Go ahead.
Um, just for clarification, uh, Mr. Phillips, this, approving these contracts is just giving the ability to when the city decides to move forward to open up facilities to the public and have sports program, uh, the, uh, contract, I mean, the agreement would be in place. In order for us to open up the city to, I mean, the facilities to the public and have programs, that decision will have to come back to council by where the city manager with the recommendation.
These, what we're doing is preserving the city's option. The city manager has not signed any contract. We're just giving the city the authority to do so, should we deem it necessary. We're not obligated to any specific service delivery model with these renewals. It is again to preserve options.
See, I.
Excuse me, Mr. Phillips, will you please mute yourself, please? We hearing background noise. Continue, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you for that clarification. The only thing that I would ask you and Mr. Donald to do, and, and maybe Mr. Donald by way of you, um, is to make sure that you put something in writing, um, to the heads of these youth athletic associations, um, explaining that, uh, explicitly that they are not to be collecting any, um, registration fees, uh, until they get clearance from the city that facilities are open to the public and youth athletic sports may commence.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
And I, I don't want to give that direction to you. Is that okay, Mr. Donald? Cause I know I don't want to be accused of violating the charter and giving you direction. Mr. Donald, is that a fair, can you please give, uh, your.
Reason that we're actually, we draft letters and none of this stuff has been implemented. The council is just simply giving us the authority. No registration will be open or anything of the such until the council is notified. And then we'll be providing guidance to all of the athletic associations in writing. So that's our normal practice and we will continue with that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Rouse, Councilwoman Rouse. Councilwoman Rouse. Okay. Okay, we gotta move on. Uh.
Councilmember Rouse is calling for the question.
Okay. We've finished. Let's take the vote.
Well, uh, Mayor, who, who seconded?
I think it was Ms. Wrong. Ms. Gun, didn't you second that motion for this?
I did.
Yes. So let's vote.
Okay, Councilmember Rouse. Councilmember Guns.
Aye.
Willis. Councilmember Willis.
Aye, and Rouse has a yes in the chat box. I'm not really.
Councilmember Gil yard. Councilmember Reeves.
Aye, to approval.
No, this is to approve.
I know, I, I, I.
Councilmember Khalid.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Did I hear Gil yard? The motion passes.
Okay, uh, at this time, Mr. Khalid, you want to make a motion to, uh?
Uh, I was gonna say, my questions haven't answered, so you all can a, a, approve all of the other items in bank if you'd like.
All of the other items, you not, you said, you said now it down to fourteen, right?
No, you can do all of them. You can do, those were my questions, so you can do all of them. I just had those couple of questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so.
Nine to twenty-two.
Right.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent items from nine to twenty-two.
Second.
Properly move, properly move the second. Discussion. Hearing none, all goes in favor? Let's vote. All goes in favor.
Yes.
Guns.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Gil yard. Reeves.
Aye.
Khalid.
No.
Hang it off.
Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Gil yard.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item.
Next item is to approve the second reading and adoption of the welcoming city ordinance.
I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of the welcoming city ordinance for the city of South Fulton.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is properly moved and second. Discussion. Hearing none, let's vote, please.
Baker.
Epstein.
Khalid. Councilmember Khalid.
Aye.
Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Gil yard.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Guns.
Yes.
Wow. Motion passes.
Okay.
Next item. Number twenty-four, council second reading and adoption of ordinance enhancing accounting protocols during city emergencies, amending Title One, Chapter Nine of the city's procurement policies.
I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve this. All it does is make sure that they're supporting documentation for whatever is over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is second?
I second.
Properly move the second. We're in discussion. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, I just want clarification, uh, when I read through this ordinance, it appears that, uh, it's requiring, um, and I'm, this is a question I'm directing to the city attorney. Uh, it requires us to give approval before anything is spent over twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, in emergency situations, does that, was, does this order, I mean, requires that we give itemized expenditures, but it also requires that in a situation, if anything has to be spent over twenty-five thousand dollars, we got, it has to come before council for approval.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just unmuting my phone. So you already have a provision that
Right.
sets the twenty-five thousand threshold. What this does is mainly it puts, um, detailed requirements. Like it just says that, um, when it comes before the council pass to include X, Y, Z, and then there's a list of details.
So, uh, and I'm seeking clarification. That's it. So, uh, I guess my question is if, if something happens, uh, unforeseen cir, um, circumstance such as a tornado or even and we have to make some emergency purchases, um, this ordinance is requiring that we get details, uh, itemized listing also those requirements before we approve or is that what this is doing? I mean, I'm just, I'm just confused because I had a conversation with Ms., uh, Gil yard about it a while ago and we never, I never did get total clarification. So I'm asking you, Attorney Walker.
Yeah, so this, this ordinance really doesn't have, so it doesn't really set parameters. The only, the only rea, the only reason twenty-five thousand is even mentioned is because that's your threshold for items to have to come before you.
Right.
You can do is you can, um, it sounds like what you're referring to may be some exception where, um, the city manager may be able to spend over twenty-five thousand if it's an emergency.
Yeah, I just. I just don't want this ordinance to, um, to hamper if there's an unforeseen circumstance or there's an emergency. I just don't want, uh, the, the person, uh, anybody in a city manager role to be hampered, to have to get bogged down in a lot of details. Um, you know, know that they typically bring that information back and I know that information is important. And I agree with Councilmember Gil yard premise for this ordinance, but what I don't want to do is in unforeseen circumstance, um, that, uh, it hampers the person in that role from, uh, making expenditures um, that, um, that are needed for aid for employees or, you know, for, um, for the good of the people in the city.
Yeah, so what, so what I, what I put here is I put, if you look at the, let's see, one, two, three, four, the fifth lineup, it says as soon as practicable. Which is intended to accommodate situations where he may not have the time to give you. the time to give you this amount of detail if it's of a severe enough nature.
So I did put that in there, yeah. Okay, that's fine.
I, I need to speak, Mr. Mayor, and I, I do have problems getting in. I did go under, I did raise my hand.
I hear you, I hear you speaking.
Okay, so, um, I, 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 I'm almost sure that if there is an emergency, no matter what that emergency might be, and, and, you know, I'm just using the word emergency, that we would have to make a lot of changes about a lot of different things. So that twenty-five thousand dollars is already in place. And so if it's an emergency, the city manager is gonna somehow communicate with us to say, this is an emergency because of A, B, and C, and I need to do whatever right away, and I am sure we will accommodate that. So this ordinance is not gonna stop that. What, the reason, the main reason why I wrote it was because it was when the pandemic was coming and, um, there was a request for fifty thousand. And we proved it, we approved it without any documentation. Now, to, to the city manager's credit, he did tell us, it, I'm gonna send it to you in email, and by the time we finished the meeting, we did get it. So we just need to make sure that we have something in place. And if there is an emergency, that's called an exception. And we are going to be, I think, flexible enough to deal with exceptions.
Okay, uh, I have a question for the attorney.
Yes, Mayor.
You use the, you use the term set per, this doesn't set parameters. Doesn't set parameters on what?
Well, I mean, the, the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold is a, is a parameter that's been set in a separate provision of your code. So this doesn't, this doesn't set, this doesn't establish that there's a twenty-five thousand dollar threshold. This is just establishing if, if he's spending less than twenty-five thousand, then give the council details as soon as you can. And if he's spending more than twenty-five thousand when it comes before the council, which it will do pursuant, pursuant to your current, current existing section that requires twenty-five plus to come before you, it says that when that comes before the council, to give them X, Y, Z. And then it lists, um, items that, that he's expected to give. For example, the amount and length of the contract, the name of the anticipated contractor, um, a copy of the proposed contract, and I put where practicable, because I know sometimes things will move so quickly that there may not be a physical contract to give you at the point that a need for a contract is conceived. Um, and then as well as a listing of the items to be procured.
Well, I don't have any problem. I have any problem with him not giving documentation for anything that he spends. Last question, though, is in the need of it, Mr. Gilliard mentioned that if more than that, he'll find a way to, uh, to get to us. If we can't have a meeting, does this, how do you define that? Do we just poll the board by phone?
Yeah, if you, so you don't have any, any situation, and I, and I'm saying this with a disclaimer that I'd have to, to read your code one more time, your procurement code, but I do not recall where you have any provision currently where if he, he just cannot get to the council, that he can still spend over twenty-five thousand. So right now, it requires if it's gonna be in excess of twenty-five thousand that he come before you.
It doesn't happen right now. What happens when it does? That's what I'm trying to get. Can he, can he poll the board or whatever?
Yeah, absolutely. He can, he can, you can always, I mean, thi- this is gonna require that at least four of you, or at least a quorum of you be available at any time for a telemeeting in emergency situations. And if you anticipate that there may be a situation where you can't do that and he'll need to spend in excess of twenty-five thousand, then you should consider, um, whether you want to include a provision in the code that says that if, for any reason, you can't get a quorum, that you can spend the money.
That's not what I'm asking, and that's where I'm at. I'm saying he can do that, but if he needs to have, can he, can I call if I'm city manager and an emergency comes up, can I call and get full votes? And then do what I gotta do?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. You can do a, well, not individually, you'd have to do a teleconference. But he can, he can, you can do an emergency teleconference in less than twenty-four hours and pull. You'd have to give everyone notice, but if everyone can't participate, you could still get the authorization to spend the funds, as long as four of you show up.
I hear you, but time factors, I'm, I'm just concerned, concerned about the time factor, but okay. All right, Ms. Ral, you're, you're, Ms. Gilliard, go ahead.
But it's not the twenty-five, the twenty-five thousand dollars already exists. That's existed for a long time, so that's really not the issue. You know what I mean?
I understand that. I was talking about an emergency procurement that needs to be done.
Yeah, as long as we have an emergency in place, you know what I mean?
Okay, all right, Ms. Ral. Okay, Ms. Ral, go ahead. I think y'all need to get Ms. Ral her computer back.
Either she need to call in.
Mayor, she says no comment.
No comment, okay. Who, Mr. Baker? Okay, that's it. All right, we got, go ahead.
Yeah, carry the vote.
Okay, uh, we have, we have, we have a motion and a second, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, that was discussion, let's vote.
Ral. Gumps.
Aye.
Willis.
Aye.
Gilliard.
Yes.
Reeves.
Aye.
Cle.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
And Councilmember Ral voted aye in the chat, that passes. Next item, number twenty-five, council approval of a resolution minimizing the city's exposure to liability, creating a city vehicle usage policy for elected officials.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve this pop, this resolution regarding city vehicle policy.
Second.
Is properly moved and second discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Councilmember Baker.
Nay.
So, Cle. Councilmember Cle. Councilmember Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Um, yes, but I know I'll never use it.
Willis.
Yes.
Gumps.
Yes.
Ral.
She said.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Next item, number twenty-six, council approval of a resolution opposing the unlawful advancement of five G small cells.
Uh, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir, thanks. Um, this is a resolution we spoke of before, and I'm not gonna belabor the process, so I will make a motion to approve, um, the resolution opposing the unlawful advancement of five G cells, seeking assistance from the U.S. Congress to, in helping to ensure the protection of cities and the public with respect to the administration and advancement of the five G, uh, towers for all purposes. Second.
There a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second, any discussion?
Yes. Can I speak?
Yes, you can.
Um, Councilman, uh, Baker, I'm really glad that you brought this forward. And, you know, they say the devil is in the details. So I went through every word in our zoning rewrite, took me three days. And I was shocked when I got to the Cedar Grove Agricultural Section where there was a lot of language that cell towers could coexist, which they don't need to be anywhere near any residential community. Now, we have to deal with what we inherited, but moving forward, we could at least be environmentally conscious about the decisions that we make. And your decision to bring this forward the way you did is an environmental decision. So I don't know what we're going to, um, do about the rewrite. I had a lot of comments, that was really one of them. Uh, it was alarming to me, um, so, um, I fully support it because they don't need to be anywhere near a residential community. There's a lot of research and documentation that they definitely result in, in cancer.
Well, Mr., Mr. Mayor, uh, if I may, I just wanted to just, uh, piggyback, I think that that's part of it. And I would like to give the majority of, uh, this, you know, acknowledgement to this idea to our citizens, uh, ideally, uh, close friends of mine who sent some information to me about the, uh, carcinogen, carcinogenic, you know, um, ramifications as far as cancer goes, DNA damage, you know, especially regarding infants and, uh, male infertility. Uh, and I think that that's like a real, real big deal when it comes to what we have going on simply off the radiation. And, um, we currently have several mini cell towers in our homes just by having these wifi, uh, uh, routers, and I think, uh, also, uh, our city attorney gave some very insightful information while we were working on this regarding things that we can do to help, you know, our friends and family all over when it comes to these things, uh, like the Termeline, uh, plants and bracelets. Uh, I've ordered those for my family. I know that, uh, they're supposed to assist in, uh, keeping away a lot of the radiations, even the, uh, the stones. If you keep them where you are near the cell phones, the majority of the time, uh, it's known to, uh, you know, ward off some of the radiation. And as we know, uh, there's a lot of flu-like symptoms that have always been, uh, equated to these five G, uh, towers, uh, and I'll never go beyond that as far as, you know, what people are saying about coronavirus in Wuhan, China, as well as the initial, uh, testing for five G in Wuhan, China. But I think that it's important that we, as citizens, uh, given that coronavirus i- is affecting, uh, our people in a way that is not many others, uh, or as much. If there's anything that we can do to legislate, uh, uh, something that may be a contributing factor, uh, I asked my colleagues to vote to, uh,
Okay.
pass this.
All right, Ms. Guns, do you still need to speak?
Yes, um, thank you, Councilman Baker, for, um, bringing this forward. Um, there are a few questions that I probably want to ask the city manager in regards to the five G. Um, I do understand the health, uh, impact that it has on our community, but also too, um, looking forward our future as a smart city. I know we're a very young city, um, and I know that two cities, and I sent this to my colleagues, uh, Brookhaven, I believe, the city of Atlanta, are also in, um, dispute with the FCC in regards to this. So how, have we received any type of fees or any, um, I guess, interest of putting more cell towers in the city of South Fulton? That's for our city manager.
So I wouldn't, I, I don't actually have an answer to that right now. I know that, uh, through our, uh, franchise agreements, I think you approved some, maybe it was AT&amp;T last year, uh, a poll agreement, uh, that came before the council, but additional cell towers have not. But I believe that they are, that the federal government does not have to receive local, uh, approval to install those, which is the reason why those other municipalities have, uh, I guess, went the legal route in opposition to, to my knowledge.
Mm-hmm.
So that's.
So my understanding that it also impacts the aesthetics of our community, because like you just said, they can come and actually put these towers up anywhere without city approval. Is that what you're saying?
Well, can I clarify that?
Yeah, I've gotta defer to the city attorney, it's more appropriate for her to give you an answer than me.
Okay.
Yeah, so they do require city approval. Um, the problem is that there was recent federal legislation. Um, there were two orders that went out with the Federal Communication Commission that greatly expanded the ability to come into cities. So basically, y- y- you have very, very little teeth to deny an application. It's almost near impossible the way it's set up. So you can, um, there's even provisions that state if you slow the process to, if you make the process too lengthy, lengthy, then they can still put it up. So you can regulate it to a, to a certain extent. Um, I don't know if you recall, but Councilman Ral was, um, the sponsor of legislation that actually expanded the scope of our ability to regulate this to the extent that those orders allowed. So she asked my office to collaborate with her to, um, tighten the regulation as much as possible. And we did that back in November with, um, a telecommunications ordinance that we put in place. But if they want to come in now, it's your, your hands are basically tied. And because of that, that's why, as Councilwoman Gump said, Brookhaven, um, Atlanta, I listed some of the cities.
New York, Chicago.
Yeah, like Nebraska, New Mexico, uh, Las Vegas, like I didn't, I listed some. If I would have listed all the cities, it would have took up like the, the first page of your resolution. So there are numerous cities that have sued, um, the FCC and it's still pending in federal court. They were supposed to have arguments this spring, but, um, I know that process is, you know, being delayed because of the pandemic, but that's just the situation where five G is now.
Okay, I think you've answered my question.
All right, let's vote.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Cle.
Uh, abstain.
Reeves.
Aye.
Gilliard. Councilmember Gilliard.
Uh, oh, wait a minute. Aye, yes.
Willis.
Aye.
Gumps.
Aye.
Ral. Councilmember Ral, are you there?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that passed, that passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, real quick, I just have to because they were texting me, uh, the people at Oakley Township and, uh, the young lady, I forget her name from last, uh, council meeting who requested this, as well as Mr. Shandry Crawford, AKA Bangla Dast, the producer. Uh, thanks for all of your input in bringing this together.
Okay, Madam clerk, next.
Next item is number twenty-seven, council first reading of of unlawful discharge ordinance.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, this actually was supposed to come as an emergency ordinance before council. Since the pandemic, uh, we have had a lot of unlawful firearms discharged across our city. And there's currently nothing in the, uh, municipal code that would allow, um, an arrest. So I've collaborated with, um, my colleagues on council and work closely with Chief Meadows. And we really need to move forward on this. This has been an ongoing issue, um, uh, like I said, since the pandemic. So I would ask that we adopt this as an emergency ordinance and then come back for a second read to make it permanent.
Mayor, yeah, you, you're absolutely right. Uh, is the attorney there, Madam Attorney?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor.
This was, this, that, that was the way it was supposed, I just overlooked it myself. But it, it should be a mer- an emergency ordinance.
And Mayor?
Yes, can I, can I propose the motion when you're ready, Councilwoman?
Yes.
If we're going to make, if we're going to convert, make that conversion.
Yes.
Mayor.
Then heard a motion, yes.
I would like to be added as a, uh, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this. Uh, we, I do agree with Councilmember Ral, and I've had, uh, uh, Chief Meadows have been, um, uh, communicated with several of my community members over, uh, about this, uh, shooting. Um, I'm glad this was brought forth. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Yes, no, I don't think that's a problem.
I, I need to, I, I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. We also have a lot of it, um, in District Four, and, I mean, to the, to the extent that people are, are doing it in their backyards, close to people's homes. Uh, people are trying to buy a house and somebody comes outside and starts shooting and act like they're shooting, you know, at something and there's nothing out there, and, um, And um um so it is, it is moving very rapidly across the city. But more importantly, um we should be able to. Put, no, let me back up. It, what I am, was shocked about, and this is back to zoning again, what I was shocked about was that. Um in the agricultural overlay, there's discussion about having shooting ranges and shooting this. And people can shoot in their backyard. So we need to be really be really mindful about the laws that we put in place. Because this whole thing with guns is out of control in a lot of different ways and among a lot of different types of people. Okay, Mr. Reeves?
Okay, I I wanna just say that I'm a strong advocate in the Second Amendment, that's number one. However, I know that the unlawful discharge is something that plays a community, particularly over in the district that I serve. And um yes, and I'll also, cause I have sent correspondence about it. So I I also would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Okay.
And and if you can add the stiffest penalties possible, that would be great. I would appreciate that as well. That's all.
Okay, okay. Ms. Rao, you wanna make your motion?
Uh I wanted to defer to the attorney, cause she said to convert it to emergency ordinance.
Yeah, but you.
Well, yeah, I just, if you want to read from your phone, I just text it to you or I can read what I sent to you.
Okay, I'll read it.
And I move not I love.
Okay, I move that we approve this to a first read along with addition. To adopt this today as an emergency ordinance, allowing the city attorney that man that in acting clause entitled to reflect the public safety emergency need.
That's a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I just um remember to add uh Councilmember Reeves and Councilmember Willis as sponsors to this ordinance.
Yeah, I have that noted. I'll make that change.
Let's vote, please.
Councilmember Rao, okay, Councilmember Gum.
Yay.
Willis.
Yay.
Gil yard?
Yes.
Reeves?
Aye.
Kalid? I'm sorry, Councilmember Kalid.
What did he say? He said.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item?
Next is item number twenty-eight, council approval of a resolution establishing the city of South Fulton's intent. To develop a sustainability plan and participate in Atlanta Regional Commission's Green Communities Certification Program.
I'll entertain a motion.
Question. Okay. Can I make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve resolution for ARC Green Program Participation by the City of South Fulton.
Probably move the second discussion? Yes, I have, I have some questions. Um could you e- explain, explain it to us and tell us whether or not it's citywide?
It is citywide. Um ARC has a green um, a green communities program. Where they're encouraging cities to adopt policies that pro- promotes sustainability. It range from everything from um as simple as, you know, buying energy efficient appliances. To um looking at cool roofs. So the city uh can submit an application and based on our adoptions of policy, which some will come in the future. We can get different levels. So uh the first level would be bronze, they uh and I've said our goal would be to get there in the next two years. Cause we would have to adopt policies uh relative to getting to that place. But with all the construction and development we're doing around the city, we should make sure that we're um, we're thinking green. And we're using, you know, best practices in that area.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Do I have a second on that motion, Madam Clerk?
It was motion by Councilmember Rao and second by Councilmember Gum.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Rao?
Yes.
Gums?
Yes.
Willis?
Yes.
Gil yard?
Yes.
Reeves?
Aye.
Kalid? Baker?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is a first reading of an ordinance to curb your dog.
This is first reading, any comments?
No, I just wanted to give my colleagues just a little bit of background on what it's for. We have a lot of, um we know the public streets in our subdivision um are oak that that they belong to the city. We do have animals that um with our neighbors that poop on the sidewalk. And uh we do have horses that come through our subdivisions as well and leave behind um some treats. So what I'm trying to do is make sure that we are enforcing it and able to cite people when we know that they are um constantly violating this. So this is just the first read. I'll just ask for your support next time.
Okay. Next, Madam Clerk?
Next is council discussion on FY twenty mid-year budget amendment.
Hi, Nancy.
So Mayor, I think we gave uh most of the staff updates actually came out during the chief financial officer's report. I believe he's still on, but I don't know if we had any additional information beyond those details provided.
Mr. Malaz, do you have any additional details?
No, I don't have. Actually, I have, I'm just waiting what Mr. Donald has s- said. That as soon as I get the details from the department and they then will compile. If we'll be meeting, Mr. Donald, have we confirmed that we'll be meeting on Friday?
So, oh, I think that's a good question is when? Would the council want to hold a special call meeting to be able to ratify a budget amendment? As presented by the city church?
I'm not available for Friday.
You looking for a date?
But again, before the date, we need to know, is it possible, Mr. Donald, that we'll have everything from the department by tomorrow? Because we need to compile tomorrow, send to council on Thursday, then when we meet on Friday, they have information before them.
Yeah, we've been receiving the information throughout the day, so it should be compiled and um provided to you in the morning.
Okay, so the Friday is good.
But I I think what what the mayor and what Councilmember Willis and others are asking. It appears that they may not all be available on Friday. So is there, is it possible for them to provide you a date next week that they can ratify this? Is, is, may I don't want to speak for you, but it's.
That's fine, that's fine.
So there are a couple of things here. The more we delay, the more it's getting out of hand. And at the same time, our twenty twenty budget amendment is where we are focusing on our twenty twenty-one budget. And we have to submit to the council, the city manager has to submit to council.
Well, let me, let me do this. How many people be available Friday?
What, uh I mean, if 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 we, can we do it? I mean, I can't, I'm not available. Uh I got eleven o'clock Zoom call meeting, so.
Somebody say something?
No, 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 nobody saying nothing.
Yeah. Who all is available on that day?
Can we do it either, uh can we do it after after twelve or can we do it if we got to like earliest eight? Well, that might be complicated for uh Councilmember Gil yard. She says she can't do early, so.
No, I can't do early. I can do after twelve.
Can we do it after twelve?
Twelve, yes. Okay. So can every, who, who's okay with twelve, after twelve o'clock on Friday?
Take a roll.
I'm okay.
Is there a consensus on everybody?
I I'm not okay, but I have no choice. The whole body is there, so.
I'm not, and of course, I'm not okay, but do we have an anticipation of how long this meeting will last?
Mister, Mister. Malazi, how long you?
Just sharing you what the um the management would have put aside. You you may take it in less than thirty minutes. You see it unless there will be some other thing. This is what the decision has been made, suggestions, so you endorse it or you make some changes to the recommendations.
So let's say, Ms. Gun, Ms. Gun, let's say, take it.
Okay.
I I have a suggestion. Right here, let's go, y'all. The, we, you might be able to shorten the time by just giving us. Uh a little bit more information in terms of why um whatever it is is on 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 being proposed. That would be real helpful. The more information we have, the quicker we can get through.
I think.
I think that's a legitimate request. Miss Malazi, can y'all, you and the man, can y'all get that to the uh, to the, to the uh council? That they can peruse it before Friday?
I think that one has been asked. I asked Mr. Donald. He says he will have the information tomorrow. We'll compile that information. Then Thursday we'll send it to you. When we meet on Friday, you will have the information.
That's good. That's good. So I mean, I don't know if I have a consensus here. I know two people said Friday.
It it would have been nice if all of you had agreed because it's to do with the budget and you'll be preparing the budget for twenty twenty-one. So you needed to know what decision you are making.
Who said they'll make themselves available?
Cory Reeves, I will make myself available. Be a phone, absolutely.
Uh and Miss, Miss, Miss Rao, you said you can make it, right?
Yes.
Helen, you said you can make it, right?
Yep, F twelve.
And Colin, and uh, Miss Gums, you said you'll make arrangements to do it, okay? Is it right?
Yes, that's correct.
Anybody else I'm missing?
Lead and Mark.
Mr. Baker, Mr. Mr. Kalid?
Um. I just have, I have scheduling issues. It's Tuesday and we're setting a meeting for Friday for a budget document that I haven't seen yet. That we're going to get Thursday. I just.
You will be getting them tomorrow.
Wednesday, okay.
So you're not gonna be able to make it?
Um. I'm not sure that I will be able to make it and I'm not sure that I will be able to review it before Friday. It's it's.
Okay, that's, that's a fair answer. Uh Mr. Mr. Baker?
Yes. Thanks for asking.
Okay, okay. Uh. Mr. Mayor, can I say something? And and Miss, 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 Miss Gil yard, you all right, right? Yeah, I just wanted to say, Mr. Mr. Kalid, I'll call you and talk you through it. Thank you. All right, that's good. So that's everybody except uh Council, Councilman Kalid. Yeah, I'll help him.
What time on the, on Friday?
What time? It's a good time Friday.
Twelve thirty.
Is twelve thirty good for the body?
Twelve thirty or either one o'clock. Twelve thirty is the middle of somebody lunch break.
Let's say one o'clock. Is that all right, Miss Gil yard?
Yeah, that's okay.
We should go from one to two. Anybody else have a problem with that? From one to two thirty and we can't go past.
Yeah, I wanna put, I wanna put notes for, cause you talking about budget and money and I've never seen us get past anything over an hour dealing with the budget.
But it, but if, that's why I said, if we have some explanations, you know, it doesn't mean that we won't have any questions. But we do have some explanations that'll shorten it.
I like to make a motion to start it at twelve noon.
Okay. Wow.
I think most of us had a consensus at one o'clock, Mayor, so he, if we need to vote on that, that's fine, but most of us said one o'clock.
Yeah, I I got a problem with twelve. Mr. Baker, they have a.
That's fine. I I just, I just, once they started saying it's gonna be a couple hours, I just would rather make it earlier so I won't be.
Tired up, I got you.
Yes.
I hear you. Okay, so it's uh, it's Friday at one o'clock. And we're gonna make sure that it's not drug out. Now, Miss, Miss, Mr. Malazi?
Yes, sir.
You going sure to have that the document, those documents before them, okay?
Yes, I will get the information from Mr. Donald that will come from the departments compiled and will send it to you on Thursday. You have the document on Friday when we, when we meet at one o'clock.
Now, wait a minute now. You gonna have the documents today, right?
No, Mr. Donald is sending the document to me to compile it tomorrow. He will send it tomorrow.
All right, I got you, I got you.
So it, then document will come to the council on Thursday.
Oh, that's what I'm, that's what I mean. Okay, go ahead.
Police said it was supposed to come Wednesday now, y'all, and they told us we're supposed to get it Wednesday.
Y'all always said Thursday. He said.
He said Thursday.
Information, we're all getting it compiled, cause we just got the information less than a week ago. He's gonna get, out of all, prepare memo, details and all of those things. And then he's gonna provide it to the council one day in advance and then go over it on Friday.
Okay, yes.
Yes, well, uh then in light of that, would it just be more feasible to uh push this till Monday, twelve o'clock? Uh so you can have the weekend to review it instead of less than twenty-four hours? I mean, would that help?
Mr. Malazi, go ahead. What's your response to that? That sounds better, really.
Yeah, that seems more reasonable.
That, Mr. Malazi, go ahead.
I have no problem. Listen, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, that's what we should do. That'd make it a lot easier for everybody. So you're going to Monday around one o'clock?
Amen. Yeah, aye.
Huh?
Yeah, that's fine.
I make a motion to um have our budget hearing, be your budget on Monday at one o'clock.
All right, it's probably moved to seven. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? I think I got a forum there, Miss.
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and just as a reminder, you have a special call meeting on Tuesday for the zoning ordinance.
Okay. So, so can I ask a question? So, so what's that gonna look like? Because what are they gonna do? Bring us the whole rewrite? And I mean, do you know, Mr. Donald, what we're gonna do on Tuesday?
You know, so all of those comments are being compiled. I think we got some from you today. And I think multiple uh, multiple public meetings. So where we take the zoning rewrite, incorporate those comments. And then allow feedback to be in real time and efficient.
Someone still, we hear background noise. Move your phone.
It might be my children, um.
It didn't sound like this. All right, Madam Clerk?
That ends the council agenda for today.
Uh we're supposed to go into executive session. We're going to executive session. For personnel, real estate and litigation.
Oh, okay.
Do we have to?
Can we make the Monday?
Yeah, can we do that Monday? It's been a long day.
Yeah.
So we're gonna add executive session to the budget meeting on Monday?
Yeah. I can't imagine.
And there were some things that the city manager said he needed to talk to us.
Well, can we, can we just have executive session for personnel, that's it, and then discuss. Personnel, cause we're supposed to, we do need to discuss personnel.
I hear no response and I wish your privilege. Someone do say something.
It's been just a long day, that's all.
Okay, well.
There's a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Baker, second by Miss Rao. All right, discussion? Hearing none, let's vote.
Rao?
Yes.
Gums?
No.
Willis?
No.
Gil yard?
Yes.
Reeves?
No.
Kalid?
Yeah.
Baker?
No.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
It's not.
I thought the motion was to adjourn.
No.
It was to adjourn, but it it did not.
I noticed.
No, we did not. We had Catherine, me, Kalid and Mark.
I made the motion, but I noticed.
I made the motion, but I noticed.
Everybody, let me go back to the front. Mark, you made a motion to adjourn, right?
I did.
It was second by whom, Miss, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Rau.
So the motion was to adjourn.
Right.
Yeah, but he voted no against.
Were there enough votes?
No, sir, it was four noes and three yes.
So I moved that we go into executive session to discuss personnel. We're not, we're not gonna adjourn, we have an executive session, so I move anybody who voted yes to keep this meeting going. I moved it, we're going to executive session to discuss personnel.
Is it just personnel or real estate?
Just personnel, just personnel.
Personnel, believe me.
I think there were some things that the city manager wanted to add in regards to real estate.
Yeah, he does. Okay. Okay, well, personnel, real estate and, and, um, and, and litigation.
All right.
The vote, Councilmember Rau?
Yes.
Gomes?
Yes.
Willis?
Yes.
Gilliard?
I guess I have to.
Reeves? Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Khalid?
We didn't call for discussion and I just wanted to know if there wasn't any time.
What?
No, there was not. Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're going to executive session. Let me know when you're ready, Madam Clerk.
Okay, you should be getting a notification now. Mayor?
Yes.
You want the staff in?
Yes, it's fine.
Yes.